I think I'm getting one.
Says it's now connected.
It just went away.
It could be that the wireless is up but the internet is down.
Now it's back. Okay, I call this meeting to an end. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
There are no additional agenda items tonight, but I just want to call everybody's attention to a few upcoming items. Next Monday, February 6th, we're going to have the presentation from the Tree Commission and the Arborists Annual Report. So that's our meeting to deal with trees. And then we also have a work session discussion of the MOU with State Highway Administration regarding Maryland 410. Following Monday, the 13th, we have a presentation from the Tacoma Junction Task Force and work session items on revisions to council rules of procedure and follow-up to the discussion on committees. The following week, Monday, the 20th, the city is closed for President's Day, so our meeting will be Tuesday, the 21st, and we'll have a presentation from the Emergency Preparedness Committee and a work session discussion about the Sligo Park Hills Traffic Restriction Petition Area. And then if I just can point out to people looking ahead a bit, we have scheduled some tentative Thursday budget work session meetings, and those, if council in particular wants to make sure you put them on your calendar, and those are on the rolling agenda, and those are Thursday, April 5th, Thursday, April 19th, Thursday, May 3rd, and Thursday, May 10th. So that's four Thursdays for budget work sessions. Then we'll go to public comment, and if there's anybody who'd like to make any comments on any item that's either on our work session this evening or that is not on our agenda at all, if you'd like to come to the podium, at least identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Darrell Perry. I live in the community, and I'm a new resident in the community, but I sort of grew up and played in the area swimming pool as a child under Ms. Belle Ziegler's leadership back then. Might be a long time ago. And I just wanted to sort of speak in regards to the grant that we're trying to get to bring a little more safety to the pool. I was there, played a role in the grand opening of the pool. I'm very active in the community. A lot of you guys probably don't know me, but I've been hand-to-hand with Terry for the last seven, eight years, living outside the community at that particular time. And I think it's very important that you all consider the grant for the pool. On a national average, about nine children drown per day in this country. And most of that is related to not knowing pool safety and things of that sort, training and swimming lessons and things like that. And that grant will pretty much probably give us the upper hand on not having a catastrophe in our pool, in our neighborhood, in our community. And at the same time, it will sort of like employ some young people as well. I hope you all consider approving the grant for the pool and also considering the fact that we don't want to be a part of that national statistic. And moving to another subject, I just want to bring to knowledge a resident in our neighborhood, community, was awarded one of the Champions of Change Award to Babo Asefa as Trailblazer in the American Diaspora Community. We received the award from the White House today, and I just wanted to bring that up with about 14 other recipients. But just to bring out the fact, one of our own has done and is doing great things like you all are, and just wanted to bring that to note as well. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to everybody's attention.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, City Council members, and Madam City Manager. My name is Wayne Sherwood, and I live at 218 Grant Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to speak also in support of the application of Adventist Community Services for a grant that would help cover the costs of swimming and water safety instruction for children at the pool located in the Piney Branch Elementary School. My house is located only a few hundred feet from this pool, but I lived there for over five years before I learned from a neighbor that the pool was sometimes open to the public outside of school hours. I began going to the pool regularly in the morning several times a week when it was managed by the YMCA. The county considered closing the pool permanently, but then because of the protests and support from this community, it renovated the pool and reopened it with ACS as the pool manager. The renovation greatly improved the pool, including the water heating and filtration systems. As a pool user, I have found the pool and locker rooms cleaner and the lifeguard service much more reliable than it was before. Despite these improvements and additional publicity and open houses, the pool is still underutilized. Many people in the community, especially those from Maple Avenue Quarter, either haven't heard about the pool or can't afford to pay the pool fees. The school hired a new gym teacher last fall. He sometimes takes the children in his gym classes to the pool for recreation, but the school does not yet offer a regular curriculum of swimming and water safety instruction to the schoolchildren. In the past, the school's PTA has sponsored some swimming classes in the early morning before school. Ms. Siemens tells me that she hopes these classes may resume this spring. The only other swimming and water safety classes that have been held at the pool are private, have been held irregularly, and have cost more money for tuition than many young people or their families can afford. There is therefore a great need for swimming and water safety lessons that are held at this pool on a regular basis outside of school hours for youth and for other members of the community at a price they can afford. During the past year, I have been volunteering to explore possible grants and other financial assistance that could help pay for swimming and water safety lessons at the pool. There has been some positive response from at least one of these organizations. But in order to go forward, they would need to see evidence that there was at least one basic program of swimming and water safety instruction in place at the pool, which their funding might augment even further. If the city approved funds that could be used to help subsidize swimming instructions for local youth, I think this might well leverage outside sources of funding to help pay for pool fees, subsidize swimming lessons, provide expanded recreational services for youth and others in the community, and expand the utilization of this already existing fine resource, I encourage you to approve the ACS application for funds for swimming and water safety lessons. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for your support of the pool in the past.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
There are questions. Who's the contact person for the pool? And there's somebody that's giving lessons right now. Gives them there all the time. And I don't know if he, he seems to be non-affiliated with the pool hierarchy, but he gives lessons in the first lane from the wall all the time. And I asked him, because I go to a different pool, because it's a super facility. That's like a little diamond in the rough down there. It needs a skylight and a jacuzzi, and you'd fill it. I mean, I dropped to Greenbelt. I just got back from there. You know, I paid the differential because it's worth it. But who's the contact person?
It would be my wife, Joyce. Last name Siemens, S-E-A-M-E-N-S. And phone number's 301-565-0190.
Okay. And I don't, there is a gentleman that gives lessons there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, I don't know what his, the pool that I'm-
He's not affiliated with Adventist Community Services. He's a private contractor, and he does give lessons.
Okay, I don't know much about this. I just go there because it's close to catch a swim. I'll talk to your wife and find out. About the pool and whatever.
You could suggest the jacuzzi to her, but-
This is all new to me.
That may have to be a different grant.
Well, no, the ACS thing is totally new to me, but I've wondered for a long time why it wasn't more fully utilized. Great, maybe you might.
And Joe, maybe for the benefit of the clerk, you could identify yourself.
Oh, I apologize. My name is Joe Hubner. I live on Carroll Avenue.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you all. Council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that people know that the next Senior Issues Meeting organized by Wolfgang Mertner, a community member, will take place this Wednesday, February 1st, at 9:30 a.m. here in the Community Center Building. The meeting will feature Ms. Winnie Zeider from the Montgomery County Department of Aging and Disability Services to talk about services that are available from the county for seniors, including in Tacoma Park, since we are part of Montgomery County. And this is in cooperation with Paulus Lisowski from the Tacoma Park Recreation Department, who works with seniors. So again, that is Wednesday, February 1st, 9:30 a.m. here in the Community Center in the Azalea Room. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Williams. This past week, I had the privilege of attending two, not one, two police meetings. I just want to say, a great job done by the Department in the Comstat meeting last Tuesday. It was very interesting, and I also commend the Ward 3, all the Ward 3 residents that showed up. There were many of them. The other meeting, and it deserves a super wow, was the one held in Ward 6. Gold stars to Ward 6 Councilmember Schultz for getting at least, there must have been at least 60 people in attendance. At both meetings, the residents asked really important and very involved questions. They were both very informative meetings, and I urge in the future, the Comstat one especially, which is for the whole community, is a really important meeting to attend. And anytime a ward has a meeting that involves Chief Ricucci and any other police departments, it's really important to be there. They answer a lot of questions. Now, this is, this is going to be a show-and-tell moment. This is just a quick reminder to everyone about the Tacoma Park, this is a newsletter. I know, I just found out today that it looks like a newspaper, but it is in fact, and it does look like a newspaper, but it's your newsletter. It should have arrived in everyone's home this weekend. It is a veritable storehouse of information, informations happening not only in Tacoma Park, but in the general area. Presentation of the new Recreation Directors Program says right on the front page and is actually above the fold. There's also information about the Tacoma Junction Task Force report, which is going to come up before the council on February 13th. Another very hot topic on the front page is club life blasts over the border into Tacoma Park. That was a great deal of what the meeting in Ward 6 was about. So it is a really important document that everyone in the city, you all get it, should read cover to cover. Now, the other important part is the back page. There is all kinds of activities for young and old all over the city for the whole month of February. So when you get your newsletter, if you still have it, read it, and when you get it in March, read it for sure. Third thing, I don't know how many of you know this, we are a nationally awarded playful city. We've been presented the honor for, I believe, at least two years, and it may be three years. And it's through the efforts of Pat Ronbaugh, the Play Lady, and her minions. There'll be a winter play day on February 9th, 2012, and if you add those little numbers up, it's 20912, which happens to be our zip code. It'll be right here in this building from 6 to 8, and that will be, that's a week from this Thursday. And don't be surprised if you see a few council members dancing around in bizarro outfits. I'm not sure how many there will be. I know there'll be at least one doing that. So it should be a whole lot of fun to come. Pat is very creative. Her play days are always outstanding. And finally, this is a Super Bowl prediction. I know this is going to be really controversial. I'm predicting there will be a rematch and the same outcome of the last Giants-New England Super Bowl from four years ago. The Giants will win in a low-scoring game. Defense is boss. Thank you.
And that's basketball, right?
No. I'm only rooting for the Giants because the Redskins aren't in the Super Bowl this time. The Redskins aren't anywhere.
Never have been, never will be.
Yeah, they have been, they have been.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know if you or anyone else noticed, I have a new tie tonight. I'd just like to thank Hannah Abbott and the young ladies at Sligo Baptist Church for making this tie for me. And I promised if they made a tie, I would wear it. So here it is. I also just wanted to take a minute and congratulate Babo Asefa on his award today that he was given at the White House ceremony. He was named a Champion of Change within the African Diaspora. Congratulations. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, thank you. I still have been frustrated with trying to get on to the server here. It's not working. I guess it's not working for you either, is it? Two things that I wanted to talk about. Councilmember Cohen K. sort of stole my thunder a little bit on the police form, which I organized, that occurred last week. According to the police, there were, those who were there who counted, there were 64 people that came out. And we had our own police chief, Ricucci, be there, and we also had the Assistant Commander for the Heightsville District in Prince George's County, which is, covers about 200,000 people, quite a bit larger than Tacoma Park. And since that district abuts the city of Tacoma Park near the New Hampshire, near New Hampshire Avenue, it was, it was an opportunity for residents in the city and outside the city to kind of get a more comprehensive picture of the trends in crime and what the police are doing about it. And it was an excellent turnout. As K. said, there was a lot of really good questions, a great deal of concern and intensity was shown, and I was really pleased with how it worked. So I just wanted to acknowledge the help of Chief Ricucci and his, and his performance. Knows how to, as he would say, put a positive spin on almost any crime statistic you want. But in truth, truth be spoken, is that crime trends in the city are down 25% over the last five years, which is entirely a credit to our police department and no other possible reason, right? The other thing I wanted to mention was, I paid a visit on the Meals on Wheels of Tacoma Park, which, whose kitchen happens to be in a church, commercial kitchen in a church in my ward in Zion's Evangelical Lutheran Church on New Hampshire Avenue. And I have to confess that I was ignorant of the fact that that commercial kitchen was there and that the Meals on Wheels was operating out of there. I had spent a good bit of time talking to the director, Ms. Fiesley, who's a resident of Ward 1, who's been the director of that program for about 10 years. And it's a program that serves an area, Meals on Wheels serves an area much larger than the city of Tacoma Park. Goes all the way up to the Beltway to the north and well to the east. They have approximately 70 volunteers, 7-0, who work to, most of whom work to deliver the meals on six different routes in all these different directions. They operate on a budget of about less than $100,000 a year. It's two part-time positions, the director and a cook, a lady who's 72 years old, I'm told, although she was not there the day I was there. And the program has been operating out of that facility for 41 years, which I think is amazing. And second of all, she calculates that in that time, Meals on Wheels of Tacoma Park has probably delivered somewhere around 1 million meals. And those are all fresh, it's fresh food that is hot, it's prepared right there in the, in that kitchen. I saw them cooking it. A lot of the Meals on Wheels programs that scattered across the area, the region, she said, the food's prepared oftentimes by, say, hospitals, and the Meals on Wheels volunteers simply deliver it. But this particular program, the Meals on Wheels, two part-time paid staff actually do the food preparation, so that they really turn out to be home cooking. It's just an extraordinary program, and it just goes about its business under the radar, as I'm sure they're happy to have it. They're not, they've got all the, they've got the volunteers they need, and the thing runs like clockwork because they just are pros at what they're doing. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
And I'll just note a couple of things, activities that I went to last week and upcoming ones this week. I was in Annapolis three days last week, including one day when I testified at the Senate Budget and Tax Committee on Maryland Municipal League Priorities, which is trying to get our highway user revenues and police aid back in the governor's budget, in the transportation budget that's going to be released shortly. And also had a chance to attend the police Comstat meeting last week. I was very impressed with the whole conduct of the meeting, the information that was provided, and the number of people who showed up. I came with the intention of hanging around for a little while and stayed for the whole thing. I thought it was quite fascinating. And I was particularly impressed with the, with the presentation and the response to some of the questions by the, I'm not going to get the title right, but the-
Crime analyst?
Crime analyst. I was going to say the statistics guy. He did very well handling a number of questions. And upcoming items this week, I will be attending the Police Academy graduation tomorrow night and look forward to that, and also to having the opportunity to swear in a new police officer tomorrow as well. And I'll be attending the Governor's State of the State Address on Wednesday in Annapolis, and then I'll be back there on Thursday to testify at the Ways and Means Committee chaired by our own Delegate Sheila Hickson. And then the city manager and I and the police chief will be going to the county executive's office to talk to him about county rebates. So that's just a little bit of my schedule last week and this week. Seeing no further, council comments. The city manager, have any comments?
Just two brief items. I did just want to call to the council's attention that there is some additional information left at your places this evening relative to the work session on the FY13 budget. So I just wanted to make sure everyone saw that. The other piece of information that I left you this evening concerns Tijuana's Restaurant. This is something I had brought up several weeks ago about the police department's concern about the number of calls for service at that establishment. I know the council has been equally concerned about that. At your places this evening is a letter that was sent from the chief to the Montgomery County Department of Liquor Control several weeks ago. And attached to his memorandum is a report from Lieutenant Bowers, Chief Ricucci, outlining the calls for service that the police department has made at that establishment, which I thought might be of interest to the council. So certainly if there's any questions about that, the chief is here this evening, and either he or I would be happy to answer this.
I think the questions that I have are for you, Barb. And I certainly haven't had time to look at the report and may have questions later in the week, but I just wondered with these liquor licenses, is it possible for us to limit the hours of operation for the sale of liquor? And the reason I say is that, you know, the owner of this particular establishment talked to us about, you know, having a family restaurant, and I think his, his concept was good, but operating, selling alcoholic beverages on into the wee hours of the morning doesn't constitute a family restaurant. And so, you know, is it something where we could be supportive of the sale of liquor for a limited number of hours?
To the best of my knowledge, no, but I'm going to look to the chief, who is much more knowledgeable than me.
The liquor board grants the license, and the conditions of the license are what they grant. What I'd like to see the council do is send a letter asking for some punishment against the place. They could actually take their license. To limit the hours, that may be something that would come up in a hearing. You could put that in your letter, you know, to restrict the hours. They could cut them back to, they go to 2 right now, which is the standard license. So it would be an exception if they did anything different, which don't normally do. What they do is they suspend their license once or twice, depending on, there's a big package, as you can see there, of violations. We're hoping they will suspend the license and-
I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest that we not go for a suspension in this case, but I was-
To be honest with you, all the years with the county, other than taking the license and suspending, I didn't seem to change the hours. I'm not saying it hasn't been done, but I've never seen it done.
Okay. And I was thinking long-term that if there were, I know the council has talked about allowing alcoholic beverage sales at other establishments throughout the city, and it seems that it would just, you know, expand the problem if we didn't have a restriction on hours at least.
We could certainly explore that, talk to some of the staff at the Liquor Control Board. I guess following up on Chief Ricucci's comment, is the council comfortable with staff drafting a letter that you could certainly review, and then probably be appropriate for the mayor to sign that on behalf of the council regarding this particular establishment? Is there a consensus on the council's?
No, right. That would help us immensely with our letter.
Yes, I would, can we take a vote now to do that?
Anybody not in favor of that? Okay.
I think the questions that I have are for you, Barm. And I certainly haven't had time to look at the report and may have questions later in the week, but I just wondered with these liquor licenses, is it possible for us to limit the hours of operation for the sale of liquor? And the reason I say is that, you know, the owner of this particular establishment talked to us about, you know, having a family restaurant, and I think his concept was good, but operating, selling alcoholic beverages on into the wee hours of the morning doesn't constitute a family restaurant. And so, you know, is it something where we could be supportive of the sale of liquor for a limited number of hours?
To the best of my knowledge, no, but I'm going to look to the chief, who is much more knowledgeable than me.
We have, the liquor board grants the license, and the conditions of the license are what they grant. What I'd like to see the council do is send a letter asking for some punishment against the place. They could actually take their license. To limit the hours, that may be something that would come up in a hearing. You could put that in your letter that, you know, to restrict the hours. They could cut them back to, they go to two right now, which is the standard license. So it would be an exception if they did anything different, which don't normally do. What they do is they suspend their license once or twice, depending on, there's a big package, as you can see there, of violations. We're hoping they will suspend the license and-
I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest that we not go for a suspension in this case, but I was-
To be honest with you, all the years with the county, other than taking the license and suspending, I didn't seem to change the hours. I'm not saying it hasn't been done, but I've never seen it done.
Okay. And I was thinking long-term that if there were, I know the council has talked about allowing alcoholic beverage sales at other establishments throughout the city, and it seems that it would just, you know, expand the problem if we didn't have a restriction on hours at least.
We could certainly explore that, talk to some of the staff at the Liquor Control Board. I guess following up on Chief Recouchi's comment, is the council comfortable with staff drafting a letter that you could certainly review, and then probably be appropriate for the mayor to sign that on behalf of the council regarding this particular establishment? Is there consensus on the council's-
No doubt.
Okay.
That would help us immensely with our letter.
Yes. I would, can we take a vote now to do that?
Anybody not in favor of that? Okay.
And what we can certainly do in the letter, Councilmember Simmons, is just say that, you know, that's an option that we might be interested in.
No, 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 no. I didn't want it for this particular case, that's not an option for this.
Okay, okay.
I'm talking about down the road, I'm sorry, I-
No, that's fine. We can certainly just talk to them generally about what ability there is to do that.
Thank you.
This was, this establishment was one of your bullseyes from the ComStat meeting, correct?
Yeah, that was one of those real dark colored corners at Merrimack in-
Right here? That's, if you come to the ComStat, the ComStat means you get these sort of documents, and it shows where all things happen in the city, so.
That's considered one of our hotspot areas.
Yeah.
Along with Councilmember Daniels Cohen's house. Okay, thanks. We will move along to our first work session item, which is the city manager's quarterly report and financial report.
Just a few comments just about the, kind of the narrative quarterly report, especially since we have newer members of the council. The activities report is really just intended to give both the council and any community members who read it an idea of kind of how the staff spends its time and the various things that we're doing to advance the council priorities in the community as set forth in the strategic plan. I would like to take this opportunity publicly just to thank all the city staff members for the good work they did during the period of October through December, and hopefully the council's had a chance to read that and noted many of those accomplishments. It's always a dangerous thing as a city manager to call out just a few things that I wanted to call to the council's attention, but I'll go ahead and risk that. On page 11, I did just want to give a hearty thank you to Sarah Dames for her work in the city's cultural programming, which you can see on page 11. Ever since this auditorium opened up, Sarah has been the person who has spearheaded the We Are Tacoma series and has also worked with the Arts and Humanity Commissions on many of the other types of cultural events that have happened in this building, and she has done a phenomenal job in the past, and she continued to do so in the last quarter. Also wanted to just note the work that has been done by the recreation staff, since that has been a topic of discussion over the past couple of years regarding the recreation department, and particularly to call out the excellent work done by Paul Lasowski, who is our senior programming coordinator. As I tell Paula every quarter when I do this report, it's just phenomenal what she is able to accomplish, being essentially a one-person shot. I also wanted to express my appreciation to Chief Recouchi and his staff for getting the Citizens Police Academy underway in October, and I know our own council member Daniels Cohen will be graduating tomorrow night from that academy. So these are just a few of the highlights, I guess I just wanted to call out to the council's attention. If there's not any other comments about the narrative report, I was going to move on to the financial report.
Just, let me first say on the narrative that my reaction was that this was comprehensive and informative, and I think a number of people who have looked at it, my colleagues, feel that this is just a really good, comprehensive look at so many of the things that the city staff does day in and day out, and that there are many things in here that I didn't know. And so it's very helpful to look at it, and for anybody who wonders, gee, what is it that my tax dollars pay for? What does the city do? This is the place to look. This is where you can find out a lot of what the city staff does. And this is a long narrative, it's very informative, it's very helpful, and I would recommend that everybody take a look at it. It's part of the agenda packet that is online for this item. If you haven't gone to the city website and looked at a city council agenda and the backup material that goes with it, this is the one to look at. This will give you lots of information. Councilmember Schultz.
Yep. I'd just like to add, as one, I think, one of the outstanding accomplishments of staff was the completion of the work by the planning staff in the Department of Housing and Community Development on the urban design guidelines. It was a significant effort that culminates well, over a year's worth of effort to get these completed. And in fact, last week, the Montgomery County Planning Board took the urban design guidelines under advisement, reviewed them and approved them, and forwarded their recommendation for approval to the Montgomery County Council. So, job well done, I think.
Any other council comments?
I'll move on to the quarterly financial report. For the more tenured members of the council, you might have noted this looks a little different than it has in the past. We previously spent a lot of time kind of comparing where we were at this point in the fiscal year to the prior fiscal year, and was talking to Yvonda, our funding director who has joined us, as well as our budget analyst. And one of the things that occurred to me, if I were a council member, I'd probably be a little bit more concerned with how the budget is performing compared to the budget for this year. So that's what we have focused on. We also added information on the other funds. We had historically just focused on the general fund as being the most significant part of the city's budget, but thought it might also be helpful to share at least kind of a high-level degree of information about the other funds that comprise the city's financial structure. I'll start with the general fund, just because it is the biggest piece of the pie, if you will. In terms of general fund revenues, for the most part, everything is pretty much on target. Just a few things I did want to call out to the council's attention. Income taxes are historically very, very difficult to predict. I think you talk to folks in other cities and they will tell you the same thing, and some of that has to do with the timing or lack of regular timing in terms of distributions. I think all of us in local government were pleasantly surprised to get a rather large check during the month of November. I know Yvonda was quite excited and came down to tell me about it. But income taxes actually this year appear to be up, and up considerably, compared to where we were in the prior year. Kind of time will tell if that trend will continue. One of the things about income taxes is we do tend to get receipts in what we refer to as Period 13, and it's basically past June 30th, but it's revenue that accrue back to the prior fiscal year. But when I looked at where we were at December 31st compared to last year at the same time, we were up by about $133,000. So, you know, it does appear that things are looking reasonably well on the income tax Fines and forfeitures, as we noted in the report, does appear to be underperforming compared to the budgeted figure. The piece of that, and Yvonda can certainly speak to this more if the council has questions, the actual fine piece of that is actually performing, where we expected. Forfeitures are one of those type of things that can be difficult to predict, and we haven't had as many forfeitures this year. So we'll have to kind of watch that through the remainder of the fiscal year and see if we're actually going to hit the budgeted figure for that revenue category. Investment revenues, I think I can safely say at this point will not hit the budgeted amount. Interest rates have been in the tank for years. You may have noticed, if you flip back to the next item, and we had given you some fairly detailed historical information relative to investment revenues, they came in under budget last year and appear to be continuing to perform poorly just because of low interest rates. So that is a revenue source, likely a minor one that Yvonda and I do not believe will actually hit the budgeted amount of $60,000 this year. Another area I just wanted to call out, which is recreation revenues, that is noted under charges for service, have been performing very well. We have gotten quite a bit of revenue in actually since the December, excuse me, December 31st date, I was talking to Gregory Clark, our recreation director, today. I think as of December 31st, we had taken in about $279,000. The budgeted amount was just over $373,000, and I think Gregory, I don't remember the exact figure, but we had actually brought in another probably $50,000 to $60,000 since December 31st. So that is probably an area where we will see revenues coming in over budget. Those are just some highlights. And overall, I think revenues are about where we thought they would be. There are certain revenues that come in at different times of year. We've tried to note those timing differences so you weren't alarmed when you looked at some of the variances, but really nothing to be concerned about on the revenue front and the general fund. In terms of general fund expenditures, once again, timing comes into play, and there's really nothing of concern at this point. Police overtime is running a little bit high, the chief and I talked about that last week. Some of that is just a matter of activity, officers going to court, for example, and we have had, you know, some, you know, officers either on leave or a vacancy that did require on some occasion some overtime. The chief and I once again did talk about the overtime utilization. I know that's something that he watches closely. But overall, from our general fund expenditure side, I don't see any reason for concern at this point. In fact, I think some of the budgets will likely come in under because of staffing vacancies during the year.
Could you just say something on that about the support services in the police department?
Sure.
Because that one's at 63, 64%.
What we, I believe, has happened is depending on where vacancies or shortages in staffing may have occurred, Chief Recouchi and his staff will move people from one cost center to another. We will put through what is referred to as a personal action form, and it will actually move where that person's payroll costs are being budgeted, but that personal action form does not actually change the budget allocation for a particular division. That can only be done through the budget amendment process. So typically, if you look at operations and support services, sometimes you'll see an offset. There is not in this case, Mayor Williams, and a lot of that is simply because of overtime. We did go back and look at some of the numbers, and overtime is trending high for the reasons I mentioned.
Okay. Councilmember Snapper, do you have a question in that area?
Kind of in that area. I mean, it's more general.
We'll wait.
Okay. Anyway, I was not going to spend really hardly any time at all on the other funds. Once again, I don't think there's any cause for concern. As was mentioned in the budget narrative, there is a budget amendment item that will be coming forward to the council in February relative to the Stormwater Management Fund. We had a $111,000 grant we had hoped to get for the Ritchie Avenue buyer retention project, which we did not receive. So the budget amendment will basically request that the council remove that $111,000 in revenue and that same amount from expenditures, just to get the budget a little bit more in order. A lot of the projects in the Stormwater Management Fund will happen in the spring just because of construction cycles. In terms of the Speed Camera Fund, things are pretty much right on target where we thought they would be in terms of revenues. You probably have noticed that expenditures are actually very low at the mid-year mark compared to the budgeted amount. As I think all of you know, we had put a considerable amount of funding in the budget to do sidewalk-related work or traffic calming work. Some of that will be moving forward in the spring, but some of that work kind of went at a slower pace than we would have initially expected just because the council had wanted to take an opportunity to review the sidewalk policy and to have some further discussions about that.
Regarding the Speed Camera Fund, how are we doing in relation to the cutoff point, you know, the maximum that we can collect before we start turning revenues over to the state?
We've been doing okay. It's 10% of your gross revenues. And Yvonda, do you remember what the percentage was for the FY11 report? Where were we, we were at?
You mean percentage between operating and the-
No, the percentage, you know how you have to do that report that you file with the state, that we, anything over the 10% of revenues net of program cost has to be remitted to the state?
I don't understand the percentage.
Okay. The reports that you file with the state.
Right.
What state law requires is that net of program administration expenses, if the city's speed camera revenues are higher than 10%, we have to remit anything above that 10% to the state.
Right.
And I know you had shared the reports with me that you had filed. My recollection is we were still quite a bit below the 10%.
That's correct. We're quite a bit right now below the 10%.
Okay, but we've installed the two new speed cameras that may change that this year.
It may change that. I think one of the things that I've been watching, Councilmember Simmons, is as unfortunately other revenue sources have kind of declined, that means speed camera revenues become, you know, a higher percentage of the overall total. We still have some margin, but certainly the two new cameras will shift that. I think the report is due, I think it's-
September 15th.
Okay.
After the-
Audited figures?
Yeah, after the year ends in June, we have to file a report by September 15th.
Yeah, if it would be of interest, I do have copies of the recent reports that we had filed. I'd certainly be happy to send those to you. You can just sort of get a sense of what the margin is.
Yeah, and it occurs to me that as we're seeing some of the other state revenues diminish, then this might be an area in the future that we would want to ask for maybe a raising of the percentage with the state legislature.
I will send this to you tomorrow.
And that, that might be something I could incorporate into my testimony, talking to the state now, but if you don't, if you don't give it back on the one hand, don't take more on the other.
Right. I guess, any other questions just about the financial report?
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is always, I always look forward to these financial reports because there's a tremendous amount of information that pertains to the, what the city is actually doing, because, of course, policy is made real by spending money. One of the, sort of a general kind of concern I have is something I've asked about before. I understand there's a natural tendency for departments to want to come in under budget, but there's a dynamic that happens I'd like to avoid, which is the tendency to not do programs, functions, activities that are authorized and expected as a way of making sure that you come in under budget. In an alternate universe, I would like some budget, some years the budget to be over and other years to be under, but over a period of time, you know, it averages out to more or less the budgeted amount. I realize that's just never going to happen because that's not how departments function, they keep track of this sort of thing. But I urge the city manager to be watchful that, in the interests of saving money, that some stuff doesn't get done that should be done, because I really dislike the idea at the end of the year that we have a large amount unspent. I realize that when positions aren't filled, and after all, what is it, 85% of the budget, some high percentages personnel, if you have a position unfilled, naturally it's not going to get spent. But in the areas in which it's program activity, I really want to make sure, urge you to, you know, do the things that the council and you yourself have wanted to, wanted them to do. So it's more of a concern, I mean, it's the first quarter, than, than anything else.
If I may, and I know, Councilmember Snapper, that's a concern you have voiced. I think I would probably kind of flip it around a little bit on its head and say, I think the most important thing is when I'm working with the staff to develop my proposed budget to the council is to make sure it's realistic as much as we can, that we're not trying to take on more projects than we think can realistically be done. Certainly anytime you have a staffing vacancy, that can impact your ability to get work done, but I do appreciate the concern you're raising. I would make one exception if we can't go over the budget because that would, at the fund level, because that would be a violation of state law.
Yes.
So, I can assure you that won't happen.
You know, that's, that's the overall budget, but there should be a little-
Yeah, the level of control is actually at the fund level, so as long as you're okay at the fund level, but if you go over the budget, the allowable appropriation at the fund level, then that would be a violation of state law and the city charter. Any questions?
No questions, now I see.
Shall we move on?
Mm-hmm.
The next item is actually sort of a preliminary discussion regarding the fiscal year 2013 budget, and want to thank the mayor for accommodating my request to have this item placed on the agenda. From my perspective, the adoption of the budget is the single most important act that a city council takes every year, and I think it can be very easy to look at a budget and think of it as nothing but a bunch of numbers, but when you kind of strip all the numbers away, what the budget is, is really the council's reflection of its service priorities for this community. And so I think as you go through the budget process, please continue to look at it in that light, because you are making decisions on behalf of the residents you serve of what type of services should be delivered by the city staff. Just a little bit of information, particularly for the less tenured members of the council, in terms of the timing of the budget, I typically present the budget to the city council the first meeting in April. When you kind of back up from that date, there's certainly a number of steps that have happened. The department had submitted their capital budget request last Friday. One of the challenges we have is that we do not get information on certain critical revenue sources too much later than all of you I know would like. Certainly as a local government in Maryland, we don't have a lot of options. Certainly, as a local government in Maryland, we don't have a lot of options in terms of revenue generation. And so a critical piece of the puzzle is our assessable base, both in terms of real property, personal property, and railroad and public utilities, which combined are more than half of the city's general operating revenues. We typically get that information in the second or third week of February. We do not get, Eliza County Executive's proposal relative to municipal tax duplication payments isn't available in any concrete form until he releases his budget on March fifteenth. As I think Mayor Williams had mentioned earlier in this evening during the administrative function session, there is a meet and confer that takes place between municipalities and the county executive in February. And you can kind of get a little bit of a sense of maybe where that issue might be headed, but you really don't know until the budget is released by the county executive. And every March fifteenth, I am on the computer looking to see where the numbers actually ended up. On the expenditure side, we have a number of fairly large items, cost items such as health insurance, workers' comp insurance. By contract, any health insurance provider is not obligated to give you renewal rates until thirty days before the expiration of your contract, and that's because, from a business standpoint, they're trying to get as much information as they can on claims to make sure that they're making a suitable business profit. We usually get some preliminary renewal rates much earlier because I try to get a sense of what those may be to give you all a budget that is somewhat realistic. But that can be a number that is in flux during the course of the budget discussions. So basically, we have this fairly compressed period between when we get the real property tax data in mid-February, where we're finding other revenue projections, and then I have, Yvonda and I have a very intensive time period sitting down with the city department heads and going through their budget requests, basically around the first week or ten days of March. And at that point, I start to make decisions on my proposed budget to the city council, and we get into a production mode to actually get the document to you at the first meeting in April. So I just kind of want to give you a little sense of kind of how things happen behind the scenes. As I put together my recommended budget, there's a couple of things that, and I say this every, in every single budget transmittal message, there's a couple of fundamental financial principles that I sort of look at. And one is that we maintain adequate financial reserves to address any kind of timing difference in the receipt of revenues. We do get the bulk of our revenues, once again, from property taxes, but you have to have enough cash to get you through periods where you're paying bills, making payroll, when you don't have that, those revenues coming in. So having adequate financial reserves, both for cash flow reasons, as well as avoiding any disruption in services should there be a problem, is very important. I've always made it a hallmark of my career to try to make sure that we maintain our infrastructure, our fleet, our city facilities. Way too many local governments, when push comes to shove, ignore their capital needs. And all that happens when you don't keep up your streets, you don't keep up your equipment, as it comes back to bite you, and it ends up being more expensive in the long run. So at least it will always be my recommendation as your city manager that we do take those things into account and do some long-term financial planning, not just look at the year ahead. Along that same line, if we do have surplus funds, getting to kind of Councilmember Snipper's point, where you might have excess funds because of staffing vacancies that are sort of non-recurring, I think it's appropriate to use those for one-time items, but I would certainly discourage the city council from trying to take one-time money and create an ongoing financial obligation without a funding source. The purpose of tonight's work session is I wanted to go over some historical trends, especially for those of you who are newer to the council, and make sure that as we go into the budget process, there's sort of a consistent basic knowledge about where we've been and some of the decisions that have been made in the past. To the extent that I can at this point in the year, I want to try to identify some issues and trends that may impact the FY 2013 budget that you all will be considering in a matter of months. There are certain issues included in the agenda packet that I wanted to get at least an initial read or some guidance from the council, to the extent you feel you can provide that this evening. And certainly, I want to hear back from you on what your service priorities are. Ultimately, this will be your budget, and to the extent that the council can reach consensus on some service priorities and communicate those to me and to Yvonda this evening, that will certainly make it a lot easier to craft a budget that meets your needs. So that's sort of what I hope to accomplish tonight. Kind of towards that end, just kind of wanted to very quickly kind of walk through some information that's included in the agenda packet, kind of walk, go through that, see what questions you all might have. And I thought it might be appropriate place to start, which would be general fund revenues, which are basically outlined in pages six through eight in the agenda packet. And I heartily thank you to the city clerk for actually numbering everything. I think it'll make stuff a lot easier this evening.
And if I can just point out to people that what we're going to try and do is, in this discussion, cover kind of a section or a fund at a time, so that the city manager can kind of present some things, and then we'll get into some discussion, cover a fund at a time.
All right. I had highlighted on this, this is sort of a historical trend of actual revenues from the various revenue categories, as well as the adopted budget for this year. And we talked a little bit about where we're at in the year with the financial report we just went over. The ones I've highlighted are things that I think are a little bit more relevant than some of the other sources, so Yvonda and I are certainly happy to answer questions. But these are the ones I think I wanted to focus on this evening. The first three, which are real property, personal property, and railroad and public utilities, as I mentioned, are basically the primary revenue source for the city. We are very fortunate to come apart in the, to the extent that we do have strong property values. You talked to colleagues just in other parts of the metropolitan area, some of whom saw their property values fall by as much as a third with the downturn in the housing market. On page eight, which will just give you an idea, I know this has been of interest to past councils and wants to get any time on it. Yvonda had broken out the real property assessment, the revenue that was generated from those tax revenues, and how much we got percent. I know that one of the issues the council has historically talked about is the property tax rates. And this will give you some sense of what each penny on those various property tax rates will actually generate. As you'll see, we went back to 2005. The city has had a steady decline in the real property tax rate. Even having said that, as you'll note, our revenues have continued to go up even as the property tax rate has dropped. And I think that's a reflection of the strong property values in the community. So while the rate has dropped, certainly there are many homeowners in the city who have paid more in taxes even at that lower tax rate. We have traditionally calculated the personal property tax rate and the railroad and public utilities tax rate at two and a half times the real property tax rate. There is no requirement to do that, and certainly there is some flexibility on the part of the council with all these property tax rates, but certainly you don't have to stick to the two and a half percent. I know there have been some discussions in the past and some interest expressed by some business owners in the city, perhaps having the personal property tax rate lower as a way of supporting business. And I know there's at least one municipality, and I think the mayor can speak to this as well, that has really kind of dramatically increased their railroad and public utilities rate. The only thing I would say about that is if you look at your utility bills, you will know that there is a municipal tax line item on those utility bills. So local governments can certainly increase their public utilities rate, but in essence, what happens is that increase somewhat gets passed through to property owners on their utility bills. I don't know if there's any question about the property tax data. We just wanted to make sure we included that in the packet. Mayor Williams, you look like you have a question.
I, I know that I provided you with a comprehensive information on what municipalities all around the state do with their personal property tax and their railroad and public utility tax rates. And there, there seem to be a fair number of jurisdictions that fine-tune it a bit, don't necessarily go hog wild and crazy with it. There were some who do, some who had tax rates for, I think, railroad and public utilities of like eleven times their property tax rate. But I know that the previous council had expressed some interest in understanding what options there might be there, and I think that's something that we should consider. And when I looked at the information that you provided on this table on page eight, I saw that whereas the, even with the real property rate falling over the eight years covered by this, that the tax revenues continue, continue to increase. When you look at both the personal property tax and the railroad and public utility taxes, even with the rate declining, the trend was not the same. The revenues went down. So that we went from three hundred and seventy thousand from the personal property tax to three, to, we hit three hundred in 2010, and we haven't come up very much from that. So it has gone down and stayed down, and the same thing with the railroad and public utilities, which tells me that if we were even trying to get to the same, never mind the relationship of the rates, but we were trying to get the same ratio for the, for the revenues, that we would have to adjust the rates.
That's correct. And I think when you're looking at those assessed values and the revenue generated from them, what it speaks to is this is a predominantly residential community. We have a very small business sector compared to, say, Rockville, and we, you know, thankfully have strong property values, but basically, the rest of the base is actually relatively small.
I'm trying to read these same numbers. It looks like the personal property and public utility rate did go down during that period of time.
It went down because the practice of the city, before I got here and has continued, has been to set those rates at two and a half times the real property tax rate. So as the council has...
Oh, that's right. You didn't mention that. Sorry about that.
Right. And Heather?
So the rates went down, but the revenues went down too.
Yeah, right.
And I just have been, say, as a matter of policy, I'm not sure that I would want the, over a longer trajectory, the burden of taxes to increasingly fall on residential properties as opposed to continuing to see a fall in these other two areas. So if, as we move forward, we look at ways to try to stabilize the revenue we get from the railroad and the, and the telecom tax and the personal property taxes, I think that would be something at least worth looking at.
Okay. Anything else? The other ones on, under taxes and utility fees, and these categories are basically categories you may recall from the comprehensive annual financial report or the audit. It's the same way they're categorized for that purpose. Highway and user revenues, I think most of us are aware, especially in fiscal year ten, this was a matter of months after the council approved the FY ten budget. The state of Maryland was attempting to deal with its structural deficit, and one of the ways it chose to deal with that is to dramatically slash highway user revenues. So if you can look back to FY oh eight, we were getting about almost five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. In fiscal year ten, we got a whopping sixty thousand dollars. Even less in fiscal year eleven, at about forty-four thousand. And through, I think, the largesse of the state legislature and extensive lobbying by municipal officials, we did get an increase, a temporary increase in FY twelve of about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And this was sort of a, kind of a, I think it was well-known at the time this was done that the intention would be to lower highway user revenues back down again in FY thirteen. And just kind of going through some outlooks, the governor's budget, proposed budget, does propose a return to the lower rate for highway user revenues. For the city of Tacoma Park, if that comes to pass, that would be a revenue loss of about forty-five thousand dollars from FY twelve to FY thirteen.
And we'll know more on that when he releases his transportation budget sometime in the next week or two or three.
Correct. Income taxes, we've already talked about. It was actually a little bit of a surprise. We got a rather large check after kind of the June thirtieth last year, and income taxes actually performed, actually went up from FY ten, which is a little bit of a surprise, I think, given kind of what was going on in the economy. Yvonda and I do consult with the chief economist from Montgomery County as we are trying to project out income taxes. There's not a direct correlation with Montgomery County, but interestingly enough, if you look at groups of years together, there's similar trends. You know, Tacoma Park, unlike other parts of the county, you know, we do have, you know, some higher income residents and certainly some very low-income residents, which tends to mean that we don't see the kind of fluctuations that, say, Chevy Chase does. I know I was talking to their finance director probably last year. They went from getting about four million dollars in income tax revenues to getting a million. And that's because they have so many higher income residents who made a lot of money off the stock market and then didn't make a lot of money off the stock market. So we don't tend to see wide fluctuations compared to other parts of the county. Kind of going down to the next one, use of money in property. This is basically investment revenues. And as I already mentioned during the financial report, interest rates have been absolutely horrible, I think, as most of us can probably see. If you go back to FY oh eight, we were getting about three hundred and forty thousand dollars in investment revenues, and in FY eleven, we got forty-four thousand. And as I mentioned earlier, we have sixty thousand budgeted this year, and we will not hit sixty thousand dollars this year. I feel confident in telling you that. Just going down, police protection state revenues, this was the other area in fiscal year ten when Maryland was dealing with the structural deficit that they cut. This is state aid-based, there's a per capita payment based on the number of police officers you have. We were getting about four hundred and nine thousand in FY oh eight, and in FY eleven, which was the last year we got actual revenues, it was about two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Based on what I've heard about the governor's budget, he is not proposing an increase in state aid for police protection. I understand, Mayor Williams, that at the legislative committee, you had some, I guess, some state delegates there or state senators with you who indicated that this might be an area they may be favorable to addressing? Is that correct?
It could be. And, and there was also some talk about what might happen with the highway user revenues and the, the tie-in that is on everybody's mind is if the highway user revenues get returned in full or in part from the, from the level where they are now, what kind of support would there be from municipalities toward doing things like increasing, support for increasing the gas tax at the state level in order to be able to have the money to do that? And the, the recognition on the part of people like us that why would we necessarily want to advocate for an increase in the gas tax? And with the, with the hope that the money then gets returned to us like it should be, but then there's no guarantee that, that the monies will in fact stay in the Transportation Trust Fund? Will the state use them for other purposes again? And so it's a Alphonse and Gaston process where everybody wants somebody else to go first promising something.
I favor an increase in the gas tax in order to encourage lower consumption and for roadway users to pay a higher proportion of the real costs of their consumption of fossil fuels. And if we get some more money out of it, that would be great.
And then in the long run, as the gas usage goes down, then we get less revenues.
And we'd have a healthier planet and a healthier community with less congestion and so on and so forth.
Yep. And then we'll have to find another way to get the revenues.
Or increase cigarette taxes.
There you go.
Or decrease services.
The last group, which is all grouped together in a big yellow block, these are revenues that we get from Montgomery County, or as the case may be, do not get revenues from Montgomery County. The county, unlike the state, which state cutbacks to municipalities started in FY ten, the county was kind of behind a year, and that started in FY eleven. We basically get a payment called, it's referred to as library aid, which is a function of assessed values and what Montgomery County spends on its libraries. In FY eleven, the county council passed legislation that essentially for a two-year period, which would mean FY eleven and FY twelve, allowed the county to basically ignore the formula. And that's why you see the decline in library revenues. So that was a two-year, you know, ignore, just ignoring the formula, and we don't know what will happen in FY thirteen. The police rebate, and I just want to be, kind of clarify this, there are actually two components to the city's tax duplication payment or a police aid payment from Montgomery County. One is what is historically referred to as tax duplication, and that is the whole stretch of in lieu of. That is what is, all those in lieu of police, in lieu of road maintenance, those are all tax duplication payments. The police rebate actually goes back, I believe it's to nineteen forty-nine, and it is a provision of the county code, which basically gives us, it's a, it's a function of the assessable base, and there is a certain formula that is applied to Tacoma Park's assessable base. And as you can kind of see looking across that, it has gone up fairly dramatically over the last couple of years. Once again, that is a function of the city's strong property values. All the things that are in lieu of, once again, are tax duplication payments. And as I think everyone on the dais is painfully aware, in FY eleven, we took a fifteen percent across-the-board reduction in tax duplication payments. Because we are the only municipality who gets a police payment, and there was really no distinction on the part of the county to look at what was happening in their own departments. Certainly, most of the departments at the county have gone through some pretty significant cutbacks and, you know, cuts in their operating budgets. cutbacks and, you know, cuts in their operating budgets. That has not necessarily been the case to the same degree for the county police department. When the county executive initially proposed its budget in FY11, it was basically a 5% reduction as the county started getting more information about what was happening with their own budget. The county executive proposed an additional 20% cut for a total of a 25% reduction in tax duplication payments. And through lobbying and kind of the kindness of the county council, they at least restored 10% of that proposed reduction. So we still ended up with a 15% reduction, which for those categories which are strictly tax duplication payments, that represented a $450,000 loss to Tacoma Park. In FY12, I think through the action of the municipalities, and I think Tacoma Park was a leader in the lobbying of county council members, we were able to at least stay even, whereas the county executive had proposed yet another reduction in tax duplication payments. What is happening kind of currently, county executive has obviously not, you know, revealed its budget. That will happen in mid-March. County departments have once again been requested to cut their budgets anywhere from 1% to 2% is what I had been told. I was at a meeting with some of the county staff, including the chief administrative officer for the county, and I posed the question whether or not we all could expect, you know, once again, another budget from the county executive that would basically track what was happening with the county departments. What I was told, as well as the other municipalities, is that decision has not been made, but that wouldn't be an unreasonable assumption for us to make when we are putting together our own municipal budgets. The last item in that big yellow block is the, it's referred to as the Tacoma Langley Rec Agreement, and that's sort of the name that's in the contract. This is the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. I think the council is aware, the property is actually owned by Park and Planning. This was obviously part of the transition when Tacoma Park went through unification. Unlike Prince George's County Park and Planning, Montgomery County's Park and Planning doesn't operate recreation centers. So basically, it's owned by Park and Planning. It would be operated by Montgomery County Recreation, and they contract with the city of Tacoma Park to actually operate that. So there is actually a formal contract. And as you can just sort of look across the lines, we have gotten significant revenue reductions in that county line item as well. So that is sort of where we, depressing, where we have been in terms of revenues. I want to make sure I use your time and get your comments. The only thing I was also going to talk about in terms of general fund expenditures, and just really the whole city budget, would be on page 14, and I'll go through this very, very, pages 14 and 15, and I'll go through this very quickly. What is on page 14 is the personnel schedule or the schedule of full-time equivalents. What we have tended to do here in Tacoma Park is when we have vacancies, have just tried to sort of look at what the needs are and sort of realign positions, perhaps move, you know, cut a position in one department, add it in another as needs dictate. We have tried to stay, you know, relatively lean. In FY11, as we were dealing with all the issues I just talked about, we did go through some significant staff reductions. It was my judgment at that time that that was what was needed to try to keep things on a somewhat even keel financially. And we did cut about seven position, a total of seven full-time equivalents. And we have sort of, we have essentially stayed at that level for FY12. You know, that has allowed us to deal with some of the drops in revenue that we have experienced over the last few years. I would also say, you know, it has created some constraints. I think as the council wants to take on new initiatives, we do have limited ability as a staff to take those on unless something else comes off the table. And there are certain core functions that candidly we just can't not do. We have a property maintenance code we're responsible for enforcing. We have a tree ordinance. We have an audit and a budget we are to produce. We have bills to pay. So there's a certain core functions that are not discretionary. Those are just duties that ask, that we're obligated to perform as long as the codes stay what they are. But personnel is a major driver of the city's expense. In fact, it is a major driver of city cost. And what I tried to do on page 15 is just to highlight really some of the key drivers of city cost beyond staff wages. And those would be retirement contributions as well as health insurance. And just very quickly, if you look at the, on the left-hand side, the police retirement contributions, one of the things you will notice is the rate going up fairly significantly. And one thing I would just, in case the council is not aware of it, is police officers do not participate in social security. Those hired after 1986 are required to participate in Medicare, but we do not make a 6.2% payroll contribution on behalf of police officers. We do have, this is a relatively young plan. It started in 2001, and we have had a much higher than anticipated rate of disability, and that was one of the drivers in the rates going up, especially from 2008. You'll notice around 2010, the employer contribution rate started to stabilize. There is a police pension board, and one of the things that we all had talked about, I'm the chair of that committee, Yvonne is on it, as well as Chief Cucci, was the committee made a recommendation to the city council after going through some staff discussions with the union that basically would make some modifications in the pension plan. And part of that was to address the disability problem. That was enacted by the council, and it has stabilized things. So we have not seen the rate go up, and we have not had as many disabilities. I probably should note, just because there has been so much press about police officer disabilities in Montgomery County, we do our due diligence. People have to verify, medically verify that they are disabled on an annual basis, and it is something that we track. But if you'll notice, just the cost from 2008 up to the year-to-date 2012, and that is a final figure, we make the contribution in December, cost went up from about $652,000 to about $924,000. So we have, when you look at the operating budget, we have about $1 million of cost that is just tied to making the employer contribution to the police pension plan. To the right of that is-
I think, just let me, we have questions on that particular area.
Yeah, I, I wondered if we do any reassessment of the disabilities over a period of time?
What we do, Councilmember Simmons, is a, there has to be medical information provided every year that is reviewed and to ensure that the individual is still considered disabled under the same parameters, that they're unable to perform their job.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also, on the front end, before disability is approved, there is a disability review committee. It's a subset of the board, and we basically will send, will review medical information and sometimes fairly extensive medical information to make that determination.
Councilmember Schultz, did you have a question?
Well, no, that I had a, just a comment. It sounds like it parallels workers' comp claims in terms of the level of scrutiny.
I would say that we do a pretty good job of scrutinizing disability claims. And I can think of one during my time with the city that the disability review committee made a determination whether something was in line of duty disability or not, because there was a difference in the benefit level, that that was appealed, and the board came down on one side, and there was probably a stack of medical information like that that the board reviewed as part of their consideration. I would say workers' comp claims, and I've made this statement publicly, coming from a different part of the country and a different state, the workers' comp laws in Maryland are, in my opinion, very much geared towards the person filing for workers' compensation. There is not the kind of independent review that I have seen in a state that I previously worked in. In terms of the state retirement contributions, this would be the plan that covers virtually all of the civilian employees of the city. You also see an increase in rates. This is not really tied to disability. This is a function of what's been happening in the stock market. And both for the police retirement plan and the Maryland retirement plan, the employer contribution rates are based on kind of where the stock market was as of June 30th, which is the end of the fiscal year for both plans. For those of you who paid any attention to the stock market, it was actually looking really good as of June 30th, 2011. So the good news is that on the state retirement side, we do have the rate for FY13, and it will actually go down fairly considerably. To the right, and I'll just speak very quickly, there's a, you'll notice, an unfunded liability for the Maryland retirement system. I just wanted to note the fact that this was an unfunded liability that was being amortized over a period of 40 years. That was the city's choice. That was something Yvonne and I looked at a number of years ago, and basically, by amortizing it, we were actually, we were never gaining ground because of the interest rate that was assumed. So this was a liability that the city got rid of a couple of years ago by bonding. We'll be paying that off over 10 years. Down below, just very quickly, is health insurance cost. I guess just to kind of hit the highlight, basically, we pay about $1.2, $1.3 million a year in employee health insurance cost. Those are obviously something that don't typically go down. We have been, have worked with both unions that represent the city's workforce in the past and have made some modifications in the plans over the years to try to keep the cost down. We currently have a little working group that is being staffed by the deputy city manager, the human resources manager, and representatives from both unions, as well as from employees who are not represented by a bargaining unit. Going through some very intensive look at different health insurance options, trying to make sure people understand what options there are in an attempt to try to keep some of those costs down going forward. Are there any questions about that?
Councilmember Schultz?
The year-to-date on health benefit costs, which is actually January 26th in this particular table, it looks, and if you back out, let's say, four weeks per RADA to take you back to the calendar 1231, and you know, just going forward, if you just double the amount, then it looks like we're going to come out a couple hundred thousand above in health benefit expenses in 2012 as we did over 2011. Is that, am I, is that a fair interpretation, or is maybe this payment skewed in some way?
Well, this represents seven months of the fiscal year. What you will see with some variation is obviously if you have staffing vacancies, you're not paying health insurance for someone. I have not trended the numbers out. I don't know, Yvonne, if you have, but I don't see it being, it will be reasonably consistent with where it's probably been or in line with where we would expect it. I think there's about $1.3 million in the FY12 budget for health insurance cost. I'm sorry, Councilmember Schultz, I don't have a calculator with me, but-
Yeah, 1,303.
Yeah, sorry.
Are these straight-line across the year, or do they fluctuate at all from month to month?
Well, it's charged through the payroll system every two weeks.
It can change if you have an employee who leaves, who let's say had family coverage, and an employee, a new employee is hired who has individual coverage, you could see costs fluctuate. Typically, it will only be because of turnover and perhaps a different form of coverage elected. So the only reason, I guess, I just wanted to include this is one of, I guess, the good news is, is that the state retirement rate is going down and the police rate is flat. But I think when you look at the budget and you think of what is kind of a primary factor, it is certainly wage and fringe benefit cost. And if you just kind of do some quick math and look at these numbers, you know, you've got probably $2.8 million that is just basically in place to support those fringe benefit programs that are listed on this page. Any questions about that?
Since we're on the general fund, I'll ask my perennial question. So, on the general fund summary, page five-
I was just going there, Councilmember Snapper, so that's a good segue.
At the end of the year, our adopted general fund balance is about 33%, roughly 33% of expenditures. And clearly, some money should be taken out of that because it's not fully, and some of it's restricted. So it's not really a good measure of the unrestricted fund balance turned into a percentage of expenditures. But my usual question is, seems like a lot of money just sitting there. Given, given, we haven't got to these yet, given that we've set aside money in equipment replacement reserve and a facility maintenance reserve, both of which, not necessarily equipment replacement, but the facility maintenance reserve have come out of the general fund in the past.
Right. You're correct that, let's just look at the ending balance for FY11, and you'll see kind of a drop between 11 and the adopted 12, and that reflects basically that we were taking about $1.5, $1.6 million out of the unrestricted reserve as a cash payment towards the public works facility renovation. I apologize, Yvonne, I may have these numbers with her, I did not bring my CAFR, but of that, 9.77, there is, there is equipment replacement reserve money, there is facility maintenance reserve, there is the emergency reserve, and there are also, I believe, some funding that was set aside. These are payments that WSSC had made towards future road improvements. And I apologize, I can certainly send that out tomorrow. I just, do you have the CAFR with you, or?
I didn't bring the CAFR, but I think the unreserved amount might have been $5 million at the end of FY11.
And some of that will obviously disappear because of public works. One of the things that Yvonne and I have talked about, and I didn't put it on the list of issues to be considered this evening, so we just don't have a good enough sense of the figures for this year. Of the bond issues, the city will be paying off one bond issue this year. Of the remaining debt, there is, actually, it's the bond that we took out for the retirement that could, has no early redemption restrictions. If we have additional funding, I think our recommendation would be to either make a contribution to one of the reserve funds, either the facility maintenance reserve or the equipment replacement reserve, or that serious consideration be given to drawing down some of the debt. That has been, that was actually one of my talking points. One of the things that we have been trying to do is really to deal with some of the restructuring of the debt. If you look at page five, the general fund summary that Councilmember Snapper was just referring to and highlighted, a number on debt service. The reason that number is up so high is we will be paying off the first bond taken out for the community center. It can be redeemed as of June 1st, and that was something Yvonne and I had recommended and the council had signed off on. I think to the extent that we can, you know, be judicious about it, but get some of this debt off the books, it just gives the city more financial flexibility. We will be paying off this year the 2004 street improvement bonds. There really will be no net savings from that mainly because the council, previous councils at least, had committed to budgeting ongoing street work at about $500,000 a year so we can basically maintain our infrastructure. We will be paying off a police equipment capital lease this year, and we will basically, as I mentioned, be doing an early redemption of the 2002 community center bond issue. Going into FY13, our debt service payments will be down by about $207,000. And so that has really been a systematic effort we've been trying to make over the years to either refinance debt, to have it be a lower cost, or to truthfully just get it off the books.
Can I continue?
I'm sorry.
And I applaud the effort to reduce the, I'll call it, higher interest rate debt that we have. But of course, I note that interest rates are extraordinarily low right now, so it does make sense to pay off the higher interest rate, but not necessarily to eliminate all debt. So when we get to discussions of how we want to spend all this money, it seems like we could consider bond funding for some things. So while I appreciate the idea of getting, you know, higher interest rate bond debt reduced, I don't think it's necessarily the solution for all of these things. Sometimes doing capital improvements make a lot of sense, you know, give an increase in costs. I would love, the next time to see, to have you come back with where we are on the percentage of fund balance that is unrestricted as a percent of the expenditures, so we can get a handle on just what our, I don't want to call it the slush fund, but our emergency pot is, because I still believe it's quite high. I applaud your efforts to reduce it, but I still could see- I applaud your efforts to reduce it, but I still could see it could go down some more.
For the benefit of the newer councilmembers, one of the things you'll see when I present the budget to you in April is we do provide a detailed fund balance projection, which will break it out by the various reserve categories, as well as the unrestricted, so you will be seeing that. What I can do, if it would be helpful, we can certainly, the FY11 breakdown would be in your CAFR, it's in the notes section, I think it's, Yvonne, is it note, note seven? Is that what it is, note seven or 10? And if it would be helpful, we can certainly take the projected fund balance of 7.3 million dollars at the end of this year and try to break it out, but you will be seeing probably more refined information in a matter of months, if that would be okay.
I'm sure we'll have that discussion as part of the budget. Councilmember Snipper always makes sure that we do.
I consider it an annual tradition between Councilmember Snipper and myself.
There were other questions, I'm not sure about the timing, about whether now's the appropriate time, I'll leave it up to any people who have lights on to, if it's appropriate now, to jump in. Councilmember Mayo, or Schultz, or Grimes?
A couple of questions. First, a comment, I would love to hear Councilmember Snipper's suggestion of what, what's the solution there? What's the, having not been on council before, I don't know what the remedy is for the problem you point out, so let's get back to that. I guess I'd be curious to see if there's any place to look at debt load overall and over a long time period.
Sure.
So how has that, how has that pattern played out, and also interest payments, or projected interest payments per year?
What I can make it easy, some of that information is in the CAFR, it's in the very back in the statistical section. One of the things to get, kind of the GFOA CAFR designation, is a schedule that shows kind of debt per capita. Just to make it easy on everyone, what I can do is just copy that one page and just scan and send it to you. And it will also show, there's another schedule, Councilmember Mayo, that will also show what's been happening with the debt.
And the other comment I have at this point is, you know, I'd really be interested in seeing an even longer time period. It's, you go back to 2005 for the property tax assessment rates, but in other cases, the budgets, the breakdown of budgets by program or by revenue source only go back to 2008 or 2007. 2007 and 8 being a great time in the market after, you know, years and years of growth in Tacoma Park's budget. And I'm intrigued by Councilmember Seaman's comments about, you know, where we might be able to reduce services, and I think we're going to be able to, or at least for myself as a new council member, if I'm going to be able to get some hints on where that might be, it would be really helpful to be able to look back even further in budgets. Now, I can do that myself by looking in, in the record, but that information would be helpful.
We can certainly do it. The city has changed financial systems, and I think the first data that's available in the current system, which would certainly be the easiest thing for Yvonne and for me to do, would be going back to fiscal year 2003. That's very easy to do. We can certainly go back through prior audits.
2003 is helpful.
Yeah, that's easy enough to do. So you'd like to see kind of the general fund summary, but kind of carry back?
Yeah.
That'd be fine, no problem.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes, or Schultz, or Seaman's, in that order?
Okay.
Oops.
Schultz, Grimes, Seaman's.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Sorry if you said this already. What's your expectation of capital outlay for 2013?
The forms just came in on Friday, so truthfully, our budget analyst is still putting those together.
But with the completion of the public works project, that would be significantly down?
It should go down significantly. If you kind of go back through some of the prior years, the reason I highlighted the capital kind of beginning in FY09 is that's where some of the expenses from the public works facility started showing up in design. Yvonne, would it be fair to say a lot of, maybe the capital is around the million-dollar mark, more or less, in the, from year to year? Does that sound right to you?
It depends.
Yeah. Yeah, the biggest thing would happen is like, for example, we bought two recycling, two trash trucks in one year, which each of those is in the six-digit figures, so you can have a couple hundred thousand dollar swings if you happen to be buying very expensive equipment.
The FY12 figure, the actuals, oh, you know what, it's probably in this other item here. Those will be up, for instance, because of the HVAC purchases recently, for instance.
Right. What I can do for you is, we have a budget amendment coming forward in February, so these numbers will shift.
Yeah, so I have two comments. One, about reduction of services, and I've given a lot of thought to Gregory Clark's presentation from the record department, which had a very admirable and ambitious program for great things that he could do, and the first place to think about in controlling spending is not to reduce services, but to avoid adding new ones. So that's a comment. And then I'll make another comment, since Councilmember Snipper brought up bonding. I am in general against bonding, including for capital programs, capital expenditures. I will say that's a position I've held for several years, going back to when the city was looking into additional bond funding, and went out to the community for, to gauge public opinion on this in order to possibly build the gym that hadn't been included in the community center project. I would like to see us reduce our bond indebtedness. I don't think that the, personally, I don't think that low interest rates is a good justification for borrowing money. I would prefer us, to see us build up our reserves with specifically the idea that we might be spending it on some projects in order to have, I'm not totally against bond funding, but in order to pay a very, very, very significant portion of the capital costs of any future projects. That's a preference that I have. I was actually quite pleased to see an article, I think it was in the Washington Post, maybe two or three months ago, about the city of Gaithersburg that has managed to avoid bond funding for its own projects, and that's the kind of model that I think is prudent and that fits Tacoma Park.
Councilmember Schultz?
Oh, two, two comments, and one might be a little different than Councilmember Grimes' point that he just made, but it's, you know, it's similar. And that is, is that, it says here under historical contents, the prior council commitment to maintain city's street infrastructure on a cash basis. Do you recollect when that perhaps was?
Yes, I do, and right before I started. I guess, in answer to your question, Councilmember Schultz, and maybe a comment, Councilmember Grimes, his comment. I think one of the advantages of bonding can be that, and I think this is what Councilmember Snipper was alluding to, is when you have a, say, a facility that has a life of 40 years, it can be a way of at least ensuring that past and current residents aren't paying the full freight for that. What I, in my opinion, and I came in after this was done, so it's somewhat with the benefit of hindsight, but when I, I started, Councilmember Schultz, in the summer of 2004, shortly before I started, the city council made a decision to bond for the streets. That was a case where, candidly, at the time, the council was considering that bond issue. 25 percent of the city's streets were either in failed or poor condition, and that is simply a reflection of not maintaining infrastructure over a period of time. I remember Councilmember Seaman's, before I actually started, asking my opinion about that, and, you know, he and I were emailing, and my comment was, the streets aren't going to get any better, and it did require, because of the fact the streets were in such poor shape, a massive infusion of cash to bring them up to par. The city council at that time decided, Councilmember Schultz, and certainly Councilmember, Mayor Williams or Councilmember Seaman's were actually on the council at that time, said that once the streets were all sort of brought up under, I believe it was like a five-year plan, seven-year plan, that they would commit $500,000 a year, which I think was the figure from the then public works director, that would be reasonable to keep the city's infrastructure up. I have talked to Daryl on more than one occasion about that figure as the bond issue was coming to an end, whether that figure was still reasonable to maintain the city's streets in the kind of condition she and the city engineer thought they should be, and she indicated it was in ballpark.
Well, all right, thank you. My comment is, is that in a, at that point in time, there was a totally different interest rate environment in the United States. And at this point in time, our cash investments are probably earning around 1 percent per annum, you know, maybe a little more since we're a municipality and we've got some more money than the individual household might have. But these days, a family's lucky to get 1 percent on their money. And so interesting, and the reason is, is that interest rates are at historically low rates. I mean, mortgage rates on homes are at lows like for 50 years practically. And so when we're not earning any money on our cash investments in property, as is shown here, it's down to almost a nominal amount of earnings, this is the time that we should be borrowing and taking advantage of the low interest rates on bonds because they're going to go up. They can't go any lower, and eventually, they are going to go up. And you add, add to that, the fact that, from my observation, the city's streets, a lot of them are not in good condition. And my observation, I mean, is, is not complete, probably not accurate, but it seems like we've gotten behind, at least in my ward, in getting the streets paved. The street that I live on, for example, Wildwood Drive, I've lived there 25 years, 26 years, and it's, it has not been resurfaced or paved since, during that time, so maybe it's been like 30 years since the last time that particular street was paved. So that's just one street, it doesn't prove my case at all. And, but I'm just using that as an example. And it would seem to me that maybe it makes sense for us to change this policy, or at least talk about it, to think about borrowing money so that we, at really low interest rates, because when interest rates go up, we're going to be very pleased to have such a cheap bond, as long as they don't force us to pay it off, the bondholders. And it would be a very economical way to get caught up on our street paving. And I also realize, there's other parameters, realistic ones, of just how many contracts the Department of Public Works can supervise in one year, I mean, without creating undue burdens on staff and things like that. But in any case, I just think that that's something we need to be thinking about.
The council may recall, we did recently have a study done of all the city's streets. That information will be presented to the council in the near future, and I think that might be an appropriate time for the council to kind of see where we're at and what the streets were actually rated at that time.
Yeah, I know that Department of Public Works did a, hired a contractor last spring or summer to do a survey, electronic or remote control survey of all the streets in the city with, coming up with a, and a new set of evaluations on the quality of, of the lightways. The other comment that I wanted to make was, is just a very general one, in looking at the page, "City's General Fund Revenues," all the highlighted items that you put in yellow, there's only, the ones that are there of significant size, my observation is that there's really only three, the top three, real property, personal property, and the railroad and public utilities, that we have a modicum of control over. We can actually...
That's correct.
...set the rate, and then we can pray that the assessments don't go down a lot. But otherwise, everything else on that page is subject to the grace of the state legislature, the governor, and the, and Montgomery County, and we can sort of say, well, police rebates, for example, go back to the law that was instituted in 1949, but who's to say that the county executive might decide, well, that somehow or another, there's a way to waive that? So the, the point being is that we have little control as a city council to exercise our wisdom on trying to control our, the revenues coming into a general fund.
I think that's correct, and I think, and with every local government and every elected body of a local government, you get into weighing kind of what you want to do with the property tax against what services you want to provide. I would say Maryland is much more restrictive than the state I came from in terms of what options were available to local government, but it is what it is. And I think your statement is correct in terms of what discretion the council will have in terms of the revenue side of the equation.
There's additional comments from Councilmember Seaman's, Councilmember Mayo, Councilmember Grimes, and I would point to the time and advise that we've still got a lot of things to get through here, so we want to be judicious with our use of time.
Thank you, Mayor. And Barb, I, just...
Hold your speaker.
Oh, it doesn't, the little light doesn't work, so I have to leave it to the young lady in the back to control my microphone.
Sessio.
I'd like to follow up on what Councilmember Schultz was talking about, the, our roadways and kind of money. I'm a little confused because you've said that, that we've just, that we have reached the end of that bond, that we're supposed to get all the roadways into good shape, and that the public works department has said that the $500,000 a year that we're adding in so that we can maintain our roads adequately is sufficient, but then I'm hearing from Councilmember Schultz that his road is in horrible shape, and I'm trying to put these pieces together, it doesn't...
What the council decided back in 2004 is there would be a $500,000 a year allocation, and that has been what has been allocated for, ever since fiscal, beginning in fiscal year 2005. Of that $500,000, a piece of that went to pay the debt service payments on the bond issue, and whatever was left over was actually kind of cash that was available to do street work. I believe Daryl kept me from wrong that Wildwood is being done this spring, is that correct?
I think it was delayed after his own sidewalk.
Yeah, what Daryl was saying is that Wildwood was consciously delayed because of the sidewalk project in order to be able to do that.
That part I understand.
Jackson. Once again, I, you know, I don't know, Daryl can certainly come up here, and she's better familiar, more familiar with the streets, but I think the pavement study will probably provide just sort of a, kind of an independent assessment of the actual condition of the streets, and that will be coming forward to the council.
I think the, the previous council's decision to get on a cash basis on maintaining the streets was, was good.
It was a good one, yeah.
But I'd like to make sure that we have the, the amount set at the right level so that we can maintain our streets without having to, you know, without falling behind and having to get in the same situation we've been in before.
Yeah, I agree, and Daryl and I have consistently talked about sort of waiting for the results of this pavement study. I think her estimation and that of the city engineer is that it would be in the ballpark of $500,000 a year. What I've said to both of them is if that number is not sufficient, then advise me of the same, and I would advise the council, because I think it's important to keep the streets in good shape.
And if you have any idea of how we can get the state to use the same approach, I'd appreciate your advice.
And just a quick reminder on that decision to bond back then, we were, we were unconvinced going in that it was the wise thing to do. We became convinced through the presentations of the public works department that it was the wise thing to do and that it would actually cost us less in the long run, because front-loading the repairs from the bond meant that the streets didn't deteriorate further, waiting for us to get to them with that $500,000 each year, and there were a number of streets that would have gone kind of over the deep end and required significantly more repair because they were in such poor shape. And so the, the purpose back then, and the discussions led us to trying to get the, the point for the, going through the whole cycle of streets to get it, I want to say, I think we were in a, the funding we were at at that point had us in the 25 to 30-year range of getting through all the streets and back around to them again, and that the life of a street is generally kind of considered to be about 20 years, 20 years plus, so that we knew we would be falling behind and falling behind if we kept the funding cycle that we had, and that's why we added more and front-loaded it to try and get at, I think we decided 15 was, was way too ambitious, but if we got to the 20, or the low 20s, that we were in good shape.
In addition, construction costs were rising quite substantially at that time.
Yes.
And so if you waited a few years, the same repair would cost you a lot more money.
And part of that was the cost of petroleum, which is a big piece of the cost. Councilmember Mayo, and then Councilmember Grimes?
I have two comments, one on the issue of bonds. I guess I'm, I'm, I would take a favorable eye toward conversations about new bonds if we were talking about doing new and exceptional things. So, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Schultz that this is a time when interest rates are low and it's a reason to look at bond funding as a way to do something new. So for example, if on the Tacoma Junction, the acquisition of property would somehow facilitate or make possible a whole bunch of transformation... facilitate or make possible a whole bunch of transformational changes to the junction that wouldn't otherwise be possible, that's the sort of opportunity that we should be looking for. We could do it on our own, or I'd prefer in some cases to do it with a referendum or some indication of public support for doing something like that, but I think there are things we could explore, and it takes a longer conversation to explore those things. I think if the lot at the corner of Jackson and 410 is a vacant lot that's an eyesore that could instead be a garden like the gardens that are across from the community center right here is something that would be a sort of a transformational change, or a smaller in that case. I guess the other question I have for you is, I'm not quite sure, there are literally dozens of questions for this work session in the document you provided, everything from tax rate to new positions to resident survey, and I'm just not sure, we're not really addressing those questions, and I'm not sure what, I would like to address those questions at some point, so...
Actually, I have pretty much gone through all the points that I wanted to talk about, other than with just one minor exception. It's just to highlight the fact that part of what we've been doing in recent years during my tenure is plain catch-up, quite candidly, with the Equipment Replacement Reserve, which had years that there was hundreds of thousands of dollars going out and no contribution going in. Once again, I think that's just a kind of a good financial practice. With that comment, I've kind of covered all the history, and I was sort of hoping we could get to some of the council discussion points so I can get some feedback. I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to take a break, or you want to keep charging ahead? What's your preference?
I'll check with Councilmember Grimes and see if he has the last comment or question, and we'll take a break, and then we'll go to the discussion points.
Yes, I do, and I will try to be expeditious. So, these are reactive comments. I want to continue the history lesson for the road bonding in 2004. The council, in its wisdom, my recollection is, since the late '90s, had been budgeting over half a million dollars a year, just as it did after 2004, for road repairs. I believe in the competence of Mr. Lot and Ms. Braithwaite at that time, but the city manager of that era underspent the road money that was budgeted by the council by 50%. He spent approximately $250,000, $275,000 a year consistently over a period of years, leading to the road deterioration, leading to the catch-up and all of that. So, my point here is that if you effectively manage your resources and the work that you need to do, as I believe we are now, then you stay out of trouble and the need for these kind of extreme remedies. Since Councilmember Mail brought up Tacoma Junction, I do want to make a larger philosophical type of remark, that I really do believe in community and public-private partnerships, and that's a comment that pertains to the discussion of large grants that's going to come up in a moment. Among other things, and they can be on much larger scale than the large grants, they shift risk to other parties, say, for instance, in larger-scale development projects. They also allow the city to continue focusing on its core competencies and services rather than doing things like development that it's not well-suited for. We learned some valuable lessons about that, I hope, in the community center project where the, once again, the previous city administration assigned staff who were not competent to do things that were outside of the city's core competencies. And a last remark is that when it comes to development, if you do partner with outside parties, especially if they are private entities, then you add to the city's property tax base. Thank you.
Okay. You ready to go to the, this question? So, why don't we take a short break, and we'll come back to this. In the next probably two or three days, that'll get its slot back on the agenda. So, now we'll resume this discussion, and when we wrap this one up, that'll be at the end.
Is that it, Dan?
No.
Hope springs eternal, Gary.
So, can we start?
Mayor, you wanted to go through just the discussion points for the general fund before we moved on, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just really looking for some feedback on several issues that are related to the general fund budget, and the first is the property tax rates, and if there's any guidance the council would provide.
I'll punch mine first. Would you like to predict what I'm going to say?
Leave the rate the same or lower it?
No, the mayor is always raising the rate, so go ahead.
I beg your pardon.
I told you it was a crank.
He's worse than a crank. I would like to see the rate stay the same. Councilmember Snipper.
Are we talking about the property tax rate?
The property tax, I'd like to see the property tax rate stay the same, and I would like to see the, have a discussion and hopefully make some adjustments in how the relationship of the other two rates that we talked about to that, with the idea that they might go up a bit.
Well, I'm not ready to talk about the property tax rate because that's somewhat dependent on the things we want to do or not do.
But she's looking for just some guidance.
Well, then I'll abstain from making a comment.
Councilmember Mail.
I would very much surprise myself if I wanted to see the rates go up. I guess in conjunction with the last comment, I'm assuming a stable or declining rate.
I'm not going to take a, I'm not going to take a dogmatic kind of a position about it one way or the other. I just think we need to take into account the possibility that the rate may need to go up if we're going to add capacity to the city's staffing. I don't know that we necessarily will need to make it raise up to the tax rate, and maybe we can increase the city's staffing capacity and consequent ability to get work done, more work done, more projects done with less stress on staff in a timely way. And that would be great if we can do that without raising the rate, but at some point in time, I think we do have to balance the value of keeping a rate at a certain level versus some of the other values that we want to consider. The last couple of years were contexts of great, of dire straits, and it's not to say we're out of dire straits even yet, but I think we probably are, a lot of our community has made its own personal adjustments to coping with our recession. And if we decided we had to raise the rate a half a penny or a penny, certainly would not probably be the end of the world for most people in Tacoma Park. But that's, so in other words, I'm committing to nothing at this point.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. So, I think it's premature to talk about the rates, but there is some key data that's missing here. The property tax revenues are not just a function of the rates, but the rates times the assessable base. If you've said this already, again, I apologize, we have got lots of numbers here. Do you have any projection of the real property assessable base for the next year, that primarily real property but also personal property? And then, we anticipate an increase in the speed camera revenues, which can pay for public safety usage. So, what, do you have an estimate of the speed camera revenue growth for the next year?
I would, relative to speed cameras, I think a lot will depend on whether or not we put in another camera. We have done some speed surveys on Carroll, which that would need to come forward to the council to approve. I think Councilmember Grimes, you know, made a very good point, which is there is a lot of discretion, I think, on the part of the council within the public safety realm to use the speed camera revenues how you wish. We have moved some positions to the speed camera fund over the years, as I noted in the materials in the packet. Because of some brands that are expiring, we would be looking to move some additional staffing to the speed camera fund in FY13. So, I think the speed camera revenues, I think, will start becoming a function of how you want to use those in terms of capital projects versus other public safety. I'm not trying to dodge the questions, Councilmember Grimes, I think that's just a matter of policy. In terms of the assessable base, what we have been seeing, I think everyone's aware of, all your homeowners I know, with the Homestead Property Credit, that kind of limits how much the taxable base can go up in any particular year. What we have been seeing over the years is sort of a narrowing, if you will, of the kind of assessable base and the taxable base. Those are getting closer and becoming much more true. I think, Yvonne, the last year, the overall base went up about 2.4%, something like that.
I think that we had caught up with the 10% cap.
Yeah, we were slowly getting in there. If I had to take a guess, Councilmember Grimes, and that's all it is, is a guess, we'll know in a couple of weeks for sure, I think you might see a little bit of a growth in the real property assessable base, but I don't think it's going to be anything, you know, that significant. That would be my best guess at this point, but we'll probably know for sure in about two to three weeks.
If I can just add one point that was made by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation at the briefing I was at last week at the Senate Budget and Tax Committee, the point that they wanted to make sure that the senators understood was that with the 10%, with, the biggest problem in the state is with jurisdictions that have the highest cap on the tax of the 10%, with the biggest fall in assessable base, which I think primarily meant municipalities in Prince George's County, that essentially the catch-up of the 10% pieces kind of held them a little bit more harmless as those were worked through, but that they've essentially worked through all of those and are now seeing huge drops in the assessable base, like you were saying with the third, and that luckily we've been isolated from that because of much smaller drops in the assessments. But that what's coming into play now is that we're at the end of the three-year assessment cycle, so that all of those 10% have fallen away.
Yeah, this might be an opportune time to add. I fielded a fair number of inquiries from residents who are concerned about community affordability. These are people who have lived in Tacoma Park for a long time. They bought their properties fairly inexpensively, and their incomes have not kept pace with the rise in the assessments, assessed value of their properties and therefore in their property taxes. Some of them have retired and so on. Montgomery County, and for that matter, the District of Columbia, have programs that provide property tax relief of various forms to senior citizens and disabled, by senior citizens, I mean 65 or older, conditioned on income. And then also, a system, it's not, it's not a tax reduction but a tax deferral to individuals, I believe the figure of Montgomery County is $50,000 or less in income. It allows you to defer some of your property tax to later years. I do not believe we have any kind of program like that in Tacoma Park, and it's one that I would like the council to consider. I haven't yet put it together to kind of like formulate something to present to the mayor to see about inclusion on the agenda, but this is a way of giving away some revenue that we would have to recoup through other means if we were not to cut services.
We do have, I'm drawing a blank on the name, Yvonne, it might go help me out here. A tax rebate? Yeah, there's a tax rebate at the state level, the county also provides one, and we also provide a match. We spend about $160,000 a year. There are income restrictions, I can get you that information, and there's a certain amount of the assessable, there's caps on the assessable.
Okay, that's good. I guess I didn't look in the right place.
I think people can take it on the first...
$300,000.
$300,000 of assessable value.
Right, we have about 168, more or less 170 people who have benefited from that every year, but I'll get some information out.
And we, it's, I believe it's, to do that, we have to be part of the state system, we piggyback on the state system, and we are at the, at the high, we do it at the highest level that we're allowed to do.
My understanding, Mayor, is that the cap has actually been lifted. There has to be a 50% cap, I think, and this is probably a more complicated subject to get into tonight, but one of the issues that Yvonne and I have talked about is when you start looking at the combination of the state, county, and city rebates, you could have people who are essentially living in the city and paying no property taxes. And I think that's a different quest, a different issue that the council should look into because obviously you want to ensure affordability, but there's also service costs associated with anyone living in the community. What I would suggest on that issue is I just put together some information, I'll get that out to the council.
Yeah, I have been researching it. I hadn't meant to bring it up because I wasn't done my research, but it seemed like an opportune moment, so I'm, you know, I'm glad to hear there is that stuff.
You know, the other thing I'd just say about the property tax rate, and I don't want to cut off discussion, obviously there's, the council's feelings may be different depending on what the assessable base data looks like. If the council would be more comfortable, and I'll just throw that out, we will be getting that data in about, within the next three weeks. If this is an issue that the council would like to talk about more, once you have that actual data in front of you, it would not necessarily be problematic from a budget development standpoint, so I'll just put that out there, if that would help.
I think we could take a look at it. Want to move on to the resident survey?
Sure.
Or, Councilmember Siemens, did you have something on this topic?
Yes, I, on the speed cameras, I would like to see, we have shown most clearly on New Hampshire Avenue that the speed cameras do increase safety. And with that in mind, I would certainly like us to maximize the use of speed cameras where safety is the issue. And so, I look forward to seeing your recommendations, and not just on installing new speed cameras, but maybe relocating cameras that don't seem to have any effect on safety today.
We have talked about possibly moving one of the cameras on Ethan Allen to the location on Carroll, and we'll work with the mayor to get something on the agenda in the near future.
Okay. I know the speed camera over on University Boulevard has been active. I'd be interested to hear how that has, what kind of effect that's had on safety, and if in fact another speed camera in that same area might be, not exactly the same area, obviously, but...
Right, the same stretch of area.
Yeah, the Langley Park area might, might help to increase safety since that is one of the biggest problem areas we have. I am still regarding the speed cameras, I see an advantage to shifting some of our ongoing expenses to the speed camera fund, and I would also be interested to hear your perspective, and not necessarily tonight, but on the risk of doing that, I'd be interested in hearing your, I don't have to speculate on what you're going to say. And then, as regards the tax rate, I guess what I would like to see is, you had several proposals in here for potential increases in services, and what I would like to see is, in the budget proposal, is a commensurate suggestions, proposals for decreases in service, and I would ask that for every increase, there'd be 120%, proposal would cover 120% of the amount as a decrease in service. And then we'll see where the tax rate comes out at the end, but with the idea that we at least consider how we could pay for additional services through reductions in areas that are maybe a lower priority. And I think you've been with the city long enough now that you have a pretty good measure of the community and of the council that you could propose some things, and if you were doing it on a basis of 120% of the increases, that would give the council some flexibility in picking which, if any, of the suggested decreases that we would consider. Thank you.
Survey.
Yeah, just very quickly, we, a number of years ago, undertook a resident... Yeah, just very quickly, we, a number of years ago, undertook a resident survey. The original thought was to do that on a two-year cycle, which would have had us doing a survey last fall. Just because of budget constraints, we sort of, we put that off. From the staff's perspective, it was a very useful way of getting feedback from the residents. We tended to ask some standard questions, especially on the customer service front, and it was a useful measure going from one survey to the next, to kind of see whether some of what we were trying to do was paying off, and whether we were meeting the residents' needs. We have from time to time, and that certainly adds a cost, but if there was specialized question or issue that the council wanted to get some feedback on, we have incorporated that. That has ranged from everything, from the possibility of building a gym, to if we had to cut the budget, how did residents feel about either having services cut or paying more taxes? We would like to undertake the survey, the third part iteration of this, next fiscal year, not to lose some of the progress we've made in terms of benchmarking. The cost would be probably somewhere in the range of $35,000 to $40,000, and it would be coming from the general fund.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'd like to offer my support for doing a survey in this upcoming fiscal year, for the reasons that the city manager just outlined. I think it's, we skipped a year, so it'll be a three-year hiatus by that time, and that's, I don't think it would be a good idea to go beyond that in terms of a gap, because for the reasons of benchmarking. I do think it's, I mean, it is, it's, you know, I know it's important to have these surveys randomized and statistically significant as possible, but that's not the primary goal. It's just to be able to get a sense of the community, so that when we do make decisions, we can at least say that some of our decisions are based on the input we receive from the community and the surveys that they sent in. I think that's a very valuable tool.
I think one of the benefits from my perspective is, I think, as in any community, you have residents who are more engaged, and I think most of us on this dais know who those folks are. But we do have a number of individuals that we just simply don't hear from, those who live in rental housing, for example, those who live in certain boards that don't tend to be as well represented on city boards and commissions. Certainly, if there's another way that anyone can think of, I'd welcome it, but it has been at least a way of getting opinions from a cross-section of the community that we don't always hear from.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, as I've said before, I don't support these kind of general surveys, because I don't think they give the council the specific information that we need. What I would support are measurements of services, functions, activities, programs of the city, very specific about specific activities, you know. And there are two kinds of things to ask or to find out. One is, is the activity sort of working, an evaluation of whether it's working? And second, whether people support continuing to do it. As Councilmember Siemens has indicated, there may be services that people like but would be willing to give up. And if we had a specific question, a questionnaire or other vehicle for assessing this, then we'd be able to answer that question. The kind of general resident survey only asks specific questions about a handful of cities, functions, programs, activities, so it doesn't allow us to look at all of them. So I don't actually support this.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I would support putting money for a survey in the budget, but as Councilmember Snipper just described, I would want it to be a survey that had harder questions and hard questions that were going to be really relevant to policy discussions that we'd have. But I'd add to that, yes, I support continuing some, at least some questions, so we have a baseline. It's really important to do that. And then there are also questions that we could ask that might not be so relevant to decisions we make, but give the community a sense of how their neighbors and friends and local businesses feel. And so, you know, those might not be questions about particular policy questions, but just relevant overall. The group Cheer, that many of you know, that it's active in Tacoma Park and Silver Spring, they have a lot of experience in designing survey questions and looking at baseline sort of data that you can bring in through a public survey. There are lots of communities around the country that have done quality-of-life indicator surveys, and I think we could learn from some of those questions. My personal experience as a resident with the survey is that some of the questions are, you know, they don't quite get at what I really wanted to answer. And that same thing is still true when I think back on those questions of what I'd like to know as a council member. So, but, you know, support the idea of putting it in the budget, but I think at least for me, I would want to have a big hand in working with city staff on design issues.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with Councilmember Snipper and Mail.
I generally support the survey.
As do I. Councilmember Daniels come.
I'm with Councilmember Snipper and Councilmember Mail. I agree that the surveys that, the last one that I saw, it didn't ask kind of questions that gave the kind of answers that I could do anything with. What was the actual response in the last one? That was the second, third. There was a first one, and that was the second one, and the third one didn't happen, right?
I know, we've only done two. You're talking about the actual response rate?
Yeah, what was the, you know?
It was about, I think about 35 percent.
Is that a?
It's actually considered very good for a mail survey. Yeah, a mail survey.
Yeah, that's high.
And did that only include property owners, or was that also apartment, you know, renters?
It was renters. It was designed to be representative of the community, both in terms of homeowners, renters, ward representation.
I'd just like to, I'd like to see it more specific to things that will help the council make decisions.
So it sounds like there was generally support for putting money in, there were some different ideas about questions.
Just two possible new positions, I just wanted to kind of get a sense of the council on as far as your openness. Once again, I do appreciate the fact that some of this is going to be part of a bigger financial picture that hasn't yet unveiled itself. The first would be a proposed full-time position in the Public Works Department. Daryl, let's see, Daryl. We kind of refer to it as a special projects coordinator, and in the agenda packet, there is sort of an outline of what we would see that position doing. As envisioned, approximately 60 percent of the time would be spent on public works activities, and about 40 percent would be spent on stormwater projects. And that's significant, because the cost of the position would be shared between the Stormwater Management Fund and the general fund. We would need to detail, develop a little bit more of a detailed position description, but it appears the cost would be inclusive of benefits, approximately $75,000. If 40 percent of the cost of that position was charged to the Stormwater Management Fund, I think we're getting close to needing to raise the base rate anyway, but certainly having that position, you know, part of it charged to the Stormwater Fund would necessitate some change in the rate. The stormwater base rate has been $48 since fiscal year 2007. So I think we are starting to see, you know, some increasing cost anyway that might change that rate, but certainly, you know, having that additional staffing cost. I would say, Daryl is here, and I'd probably ask her to come up a little bit, as I've shared with the council before, I have significant concerns, have had for some time, just about Daryl's workload. I think as most of you know, when Daryl was promoted, when were you promoted, Daryl? It's been about five years now?
Yeah.
Five years. Daryl had been the Deputy Public Works Director when she was promoted. I think she did the good thing for the city by eliminating the deputy director position that she had vacated and creating a facilities maintenance supervisor. At that time, the community center had just come online, and certainly we had much more significant equipment. Unfortunately, Daryl doesn't have quite the help that she might need, nor does the city engineer, who basically spends his time partially between stormwater and partially on streets and other types of projects. So with that, Daryl, you want to just talk a few minutes about what you would see the position doing?
Sure, sure. And we've had some takes of this in the past, just in general discussions with the council about ways to assist my department in particular in meeting the sort of level of need and request for projects and services. Some of this is a little bit like a set of dominoes, depending on the rate that you set for ADA work, or new sidewalk work, or traffic calming work, will depend, will then impact what we need staffing-wise to get these projects going. So I know you're going to be talking about speed camera. Those have been the way these projects have been funded, so depending on what allocation they have, it'll affect, you know, project levels and community expectations, more importantly, about projects we can do. We've had some real up and downs with sidewalk funding in particular, in terms of projects. We were kind of gangbusters, spent almost a million dollars in ADA-related sidewalk work when we first got out of the chute with this in the spring of 2010, and then quickly ground to a halt about six months later, and we haven't picked that back up again, though it's planned to start some of the ADA work again this spring. So a lot of it is programmatic, but I guess that the main point is that anytime there's a road resurfaced, or a stormwater project built, or a grant for solar panels put up on this building, there's only two people in the department that are doing that, it's either the city engineer or myself. So our staff hours, it limits our ability to respond to the level of projects that you all would like to see. So basically, the idea behind this is to bring on a fairly high-level person who's got experience in either writing bids for proposals, overseeing contractors, helping to manage some of the project development, both in terms of working with design teams, as well as the community outreach and interface that is such a critical part of each of these projects, and takes an extremely intensive amount of work to hold the community meetings and communicate and keep the back and forth going. And then also overseeing the construction itself of the various projects that we've got underway. So we envision a person to be able to take on some of these types of work, just to give us another body in the office that can help oversee the capital projects that we've, you know, been known for and really ramped up for in the last few years, and to keep that pace going.
I'll just start and say that I think this is a good idea. I think it's the highest need for some additional help for the city staff, and I think we've had some discussions about potential for more projects to happen, especially concerning the stormwater aspect, and knowing that with just the part of the time of the city engineer for overseeing those, that we don't really have the capacity to do more there, and that we're going to have more of those projects coming with the whole process for cleaning up the Chesapeake Bay. And I've been anticipating for, I guess, at least two years now, that we would be needing to raise the stormwater rate, and I think that's entirely reasonable to do. I know I've seen figures showing that similarly situated jurisdictions have, are, have been the $100 per year fee, as opposed to where we are at half that. So I think that this merits serious consideration. Councilmember Snipper, follow by Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I too strongly support this. I think it's a, would be a great way to make sure that our projects, Public Works has a lot of projects, make sure that our projects work well, because having someone who became an expert at community outreach, at researching and applying for grants, someone who had these skills and would develop them specific for Tacoma Park, would mean we would be much more successful at any of the projects we did do going forward, rather than having a part of you, a part of somebody else, working on it, given your other responsibilities. I've seen in other organizations have somebody who develops those skills, just like you're talking about here, really makes the organization go, because then somebody on the public works staff will have an idea for something, and then this special coordinator kind of person develops it, knows how to develop it, knows where to get money for it, knows how to work the process, and go from start to finish with it. So I strongly support this.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. I also support this position and some of the detail that you described here. I think it would be really important to explain to residents, because I encountered this, talking to constituents, why the rate is going up, what you get for that rate, what you got before for that rate, and what the city has done that is significant. So I think there's a, there's definitely a sales job that needs to be done in the community for it, but I support it.
Councilmember Daniels come.
I also support the position, and I know this is going to seem like a little bit of a silly question. I see sustainability coordinator is, I haven't seen that anyplace else in the document for this upcoming year. We've talked about that position. This individual is, we're ready to go forward with that, and that person would report directly to the new position. Is that correct? Is that?
At this juncture, based on the last direction we had from the council, we're proceeding with trying to find a firm that would do, or possibly separate firms, one to do a greenhouse gas inventory, and the other would be to develop some of the community-based programming that the council had talked about. We are hopeful that we may have a contract with Montgomery County that we can piggyback on, which would just simply save the time and the expense associated with procurement. Daryl's been in contact with someone at the county, so we're still trying to work that out. If that's the case, I would not see that contract being overseen. I don't know, Daryl, would you see it being overseen by this person? I thought it would be probably like.
Yeah, no, I would see it more like, the assumption is that they're going to be helping us hone and decide where to expend our energies and where we can get the most accomplished with existing programs or existing systems that are set up. So basically, it'll be giving us the list of ingredients, saying, here's the things that we think will work best in the city for reducing commercial energy use, encouraging residents to use alternative energy, whatever the project is. This person would help to make those programs real, because what we're going to get is someone to evaluate where we are, what we're doing, what our community entails, and tell us what we think we should do to move forward more successfully. But they won't be doing the work. They'll just be identifying the potential funding sources, the potential programs, the ways to accomplish our goals. We'll still need bodies to get those programs in place.
I also agree with Councilmember Mail. The mystery $48, I think that really does, I'm back to marketing, marketing, marketing. It needs to be put out there, what it's for, what it does, how it operates. I mean, I always write the little check, and I go, okay. So I don't think I'm alone in that one. I just, and send it, so I don't get chastised by Jesse, so.
We do do an annual report on our stormwater projects. One of the things that we're hoping to get on the agenda soon is, we did have to, based on state and federal mandates, submit a watershed improvement plan for the city, as all jurisdictions in Maryland, Virginia, and Pennsylvania, and Delaware had to do, and DC.
And New York.
So we've submitted ours. We're listed, the state has now published all the received watershed improvement programs online. And so now comes about getting their comments back, as well as implementing our programs. What we were able to find through that is the city is really very far ahead of most other jurisdictions, based on what we've done for the last five years in terms of low-impact development and developing bio-retention areas and some of the rain gardens we've established. So we're actually, we're actually much further ahead in terms of what we've been able to do, and it appears in order to meet the requirements of reducing impervious area and capturing stormwater from impervious area, we're going to be able to accomplish that almost at the pace we've been over the past four to five years, just ramping up a little bit. We don't have to like double ourselves or triple ourselves in order to meet the requirements that we need to get to by 2017 and 2020. We're pretty much on track at the pace we are now, with a slight uptick to reach those goals.
What's a little bit embarrassing is I have a feeling that some of that $48 that I struck the check for went for the rain garden at the bottom of Hancock and Sheridan, that I was pretty involved with making happen, so there you go. All right. It's not such a mystery anymore. It's not such a mystery anymore.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this, including this position in the draft budget, and look forward to seeing if we can make it work.
Councilmember Schultz.
Me too.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll move to the next one. New position in general government housing and community development.
Just in a nutshell, what would be envisioned is, we call it a management assistant, but it would be essentially someone who could help with a variety of projects. As some of the councilmembers may recall, we had a similarly entitled position in the city manager's office that was eliminated in FY11. That position at that time also did some of the insurance claims processing, which is currently being handled by Peggy Washington, and quite capably. But in thinking about just kind of where people get overloaded, it usually is some things that, I'll give you an example, the redistricting task force and a lot of the crunching of the numbers related to census figures, which has been done by the deputy city manager very capably. However, that work could probably be done by someone not at her level, allowing her to focus on some higher-level things. I don't feel like we need a full-time position in my office, but I do think there might be an opportunity to have a position that could basically also help Sarah Danes and the Housing and Community Development Department, possibly Yvonne DeBrooks, our finance director. So someone who could basically kind of fill those gaps and those pressure points that we all sometimes reach, and just basically help with a variety of tasks. We would envision having someone who has a fairly generalist background, either in public administration, or perhaps in planning, and basically would be a shared position for those of us who reside on the third floor. I would say that the position for Public Works and Stormwater would be my higher priority if the council feels that choices have to be made, but I do think...
I'm sorry, is that, which one?
The Public Works position that we just talked about would be my highest priority. But I do think there would be an opportunity to provide some assistance in my office, as well as in Housing and Community Development, specifically for Sarah Danes.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I strongly support this position as well. I think that I've observed over the last couple of years that this is really needed. There have been many times when very senior staff were doing quite low, low-skill activities that could be better done by an assistant, and it just didn't seem like it made a lot of sense for that to happen. So I fully support this.
Councilwoman Mayle.
Thank you. At this time, I don't fully support this position as described. That's not to say that I wouldn't in a couple of months, when I had a better sense of the council's priorities and our options, but at this time, I don't. I could, for example, you know, if the, particularly the piece of it that was focused on community development, if, for example, we were going to structure an increase in the personal property tax rate, and use some of that to cover this, and specifically dedicate it to, for example, doing business space, business viability issues, something where you really could clearly argue that you're giving back to the community that's helping pay for it, an option like that would make it more palatable. But again, and I could go right back and say, you know, when we get later in the process, say, yeah, I understand why we'd do this, and why we have the room to do it, but not there yet.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm curious if you can elaborate a little bit on the kind of work that this person would pick up in the Department of Housing and Community Development, just using some examples, for example.
Probably helping Sarah with some of the support to boards and commissions. Right now, Sarah is probably is personally staffing walla at the Tacoma Junction Task Force, Arts and Humanities. It could be some of that board and commission support, helping Sarah perhaps with some of the CDBG application process, which she is handling herself, just as some examples, councilmember Schultz, that come to mind.
Yeah, she also staffs the CDA Crossroads Development, and she's also in charge of the cultural programs.
And when it was more active, I think she also staffed McNAC.
She did.
That's the Montgomery County...
She shared that with Blancher from time to time.
Yeah, plus she supervises the code activities.
She supervises everything.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's been my observation since I've been on the city council, that she has an extraordinary number of balls in the air all the time, that, I think you told me, that among all the senior staff people, and may correct me if I'm mistaken, is that she's probably spends more late hours working for the city than almost anybody else.
Yes, I think Sarah probably spends more evenings outside of normal business hours than probably any staff person.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I admire the quality of work that she's able to produce, and her staff are able to produce. I know we lost recently our community development planner, who was an experienced staff person that handled the whole Tacoma Langley planning process, or at least represented the city in large extent on a lot of the technical stuff, and has also spent a long time developing the whole new avenue concept plan. And those are going to be, no matter who you hire, if that position gets filled, it's going to take that new person some time to get up to speed, given the history of all those kind of projects, the complexity of them all. Just seems to me that she's a person that probably is being asked to do more than her fair share, and so I think this is a good idea to provide this support. I would support it.
Councilmember Simmons.
I'm willing to consider it, but I'll have to be convinced. Thank you.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you. I didn't say anything about the other position, or this one, until this point. You know, basically, my attitude is, if you think it's necessary, put it in, and we'll see if the money's there. I will make one suggestion, and this might sound a little pie in the sky in some respects. For instance, the redistricting task force, the Census Bureau has a tool called American Fact Finder that allows, that's designed, because I worked on the original version, to allow anyone from school kids to professional demographers to produce statistics for geographic areas. The staff could say to the members of the committee, this is the tool you should use. You know, I'll spend a few minutes with you, give it a shot. I testified myself at the Montgomery County Council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and staff very graciously offered to provide talking points for me, which I declined. I wrote my own testimony. Frankly, I was surprised by that offer. I wasn't testifying on behalf of the city, but even if I were, I could have done it myself. So just as we've talked in other contexts about higher priority spending versus lower priority, higher priority services versus lower priority, there are individual tasks, you full-fledged know this, any manager does, that perhaps should be declined, and that will ease the workload, and that almost has nothing to do with these positions, because I believe you when you say that staff, including your senior staff, are overworked, but you might take a little encouragement there from me in any case.
And I'll just say on this one that I'm less inclined to support this one than the previous one that we talked about. I'd be interested to see how it kind of fits in the whole piece. I understand the need for it, I'm just less supportive.
What we talked about, as I mentioned, certainly the Public Works stormwater position would be the highest priority for me, and where I see the greatest need. If the funding just isn't there, probably what I would do is perhaps ask for a lower level of funding, to perhaps hire a graduate student intern, or someone who could get some practical experience, and maybe help fill in some of the gaps. You know, it wouldn't be a consistent presence, but it might be someone who could help out somewhat. So that's something that we've also talked about as a fallback position.
Okay.
I guess the last issue relative to the general fund, per se, has to do with just the level of funding for sustainability initiatives. Obviously, there's a great deal of environmental and sustainability work that is just built into the city fabric, and is a part of what we do day in and day out, but there is $150,000, as you all know, in the FY 2012 budget. Things have moved a little slower than I think any one of us would have liked in terms of moving forward. But, you know, what is the council's thoughts, just in terms of any kind of financial commitment that you might want to make on an ongoing basis, or at least for FY13?
Councilmember Snipper.
Am I really the first one to hit the button?
Yep.
Okay. I support sustainability initiatives. The question you asked, though, is what's the level of funding? And in order to make a guess at what level of funding I would support, I'd have to see the plans. So, you know, the job of our sustainability coordinator, I think, is to develop a, you know, an action plan that would have, you know, a bunch of projects with dollar signs and timelines, and staffing resources, and so on, and based on that, we, the council will make a decision on which projects to go forward with, and that would be when I figure out what the amount would be.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I'll remark about the sustainability coordinator in particular, that in my limited knowledge of Latin, I know one judicial term, which is stare decisis, which is when there's a court, a court lets stand the decisions of the previous court. So I haven't been on the council for very long, and the sustainability coordinator was decided by the prior council. I actually don't support the sustainability coordinator. I am happy, though, to support the decision of the prior council, and I would consider that position to be provisional. Let's see how it works. If it works, hey, you know, that's great, then we would continue it, but I wanted to voice that one opinion. I think there are other ways to ensure the achievement of the sustainability goals that the coordinator is designed to help the city need. I think there are other ways to do that that don't involve that particular staff member. I would be happy to discuss them with people on another occasion. I do think that those initiatives are important, however, and I will say again something I said earlier, which is that I fully support even more than necessarily doing them all within the city, finding ways to encourage outside parties, whether they be private companies that are going to offer services to residents and businesses, that the residents and businesses would pay for, to find grant money to pay for these types of things when it comes to sustainability, and for that matter, other environmental initiatives such as cleanups. There are external funding for these things, and there are external service providers in the city can achieve its goals, potentially, I should say, achieve its goals, by facilitating the provision of services by these outsider providers, without actually being in the business of providing them itself. So I haven't given you a great answer there. I've given you a direction of my thinking.
That's fine. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayle.
Thank you. I support us putting money or effort into this initiative this year, but I'm not willing to commit to a certain level yet, because we haven't identified enough information to work on. I think it would be helpful to get input from the community, input from the upper former members of that committee, and more feedback from this council on the sorts of projects that are really priorities, because if we knew of those projects, then we could start figuring out what the budget is that is necessary to do them. And as councilmember Grimes said, those could be things that are done by third parties. They don't have to be city staff-driven. They can be special projects that are contracted out, or otherwise done by someone, by a partner.
Councilmember Schultz.
For the current fiscal year, we budgeted $150,000, but we've not yet let the RFP, much less let the contract. So I'm wondering, what do you think is the probability that some of that $150,000 will not be expensed until after July 1?
Very high.
Very high.
I think even if we're able, hopefully, to piggyback on Montgomery County's contract, which I think we should now, Darrell, probably in a couple of weeks, that would be the quickest way of jump-starting everything. But assuming that happens, that contract would come to the council, even if it's a piggyback contract, gets approved, you know, signed and executed by the end of February. So we'd have, you know, March, April, May, June, we'd have a couple of months of work, but I, not knowing what the pricing may be, I just find it difficult to think that probably in four months, that all $150,000 would be spent. So if your question is, could there be some carryover of funding to next year, probably, yes.
And probably a goodly portion of that.
I might actually look at councilmember Mayle, who may have a little bit more experience than I do in knowing what these studies cost. Do you have a sense of that, councilmember Mayle? Okay. Yeah, I think we'll probably...
So we don't, you know, we just, we don't know.
Once again, it might be a case of, you know, if we're going to have a follow-up work session to talk about the property values, I think at that point, we might have a pretty good indication if we can piggyback on a contract, and may even have a scope of work in pricing that we could talk about at the same meeting.
I'm thinking that even once the contract is completed, and we receive a written deliverable from this company, or as you said, maybe companies, then it's going to take us here, as well as the staff, a little bit of time to digest all of it, and decide what we want to make of it. And at that point in time, then I think we're ready to kind of answer the question that's being posed here, is how much money do we hope to expense, or need, we'll think we'll need to expense in fiscal year 13 to implement stuff that might, that these, this, these contractors will recommend. So to me, it's just sort of premature to be able even guess what the allocations need to be in the coming fiscal year, at least as of this date. Maybe by April, when we're really getting serious about the budget, we'll have a little better look at that.
If I could just jump back in on this, though, since my name was raised. For example, we are talking about, where we were going to talk about tonight, the small, what are they called, the small or large grants?
Large grants.
Large grants proposals, right? So there's a set of large grants that came entirely from the community. We're not, for example, paying a contractor $100,000 to advise us on which of those projects are going to have the best impact on the community. We're just going to pick them. And so in this, the $150,000 that we have for this year, my understanding is that we're not just going to get a greenhouse gas audit, and we're not just going to get a plan, but we're going to be moving forward and actually spending money on sustainability. And I think the same thing, and we have to make some choices on what, how that remaining money gets used, but that we should actually be doing things, or people are going to be very disappointed that we spend $150,000 just on planning. And again, I use that example, where if, it would be very bizarre to make large grants entirely on essentially the whim and gut of this council, and then turn around and say, for sustainability, we can't do anything like that, especially in that case, given that we have a multi-chapter report from many experts in the community on it, and a whole spent whole year talking about it.
Councilmember Daniels, go.
This was what you were just talking about, Darrell, wasn't it? That we'd hire, there's an RFP, and we'd hire someone to come and tell us what we needed, what we need to do. I agree with councilmember Mayle. I'd like to see something happen. If this $150,000 is flapping around, I'd like to see something happen in my lifetime. It doesn't feel that way right now. The sustainability initiatives and issues were brought up by the Environmental Task Force, and that was at least two years ago. I'd just like to see something happen. I don't know what that's going to look like, and if it is an RFP, and they come in and tell us what we need to do, I also don't want to waste $150,000 either. I think it's, you know, it's an important bit of money to the city, so I, but I want to see something happen. That wasn't very helpful.
Councilwoman Simmons.
I will try to equal that help. And, you know, we put $150,000 in during the current fiscal year, and at this point, I would like to suggest that we match that for next fiscal year, and continue the funding at the same level. same level. And I fully expect that we're going to use that initial allocation effectively. If we have to carry it over to next year, it would be a disappointment, but it may be a reality, given that we're going into the budget season now, and staff members would be pretty busy.
And I'll just add that I don't have enough information at this point to make much in the way of recommendations on level of funding.
That's fine. I appreciate the fact that you all tell you need more information. I just know that I didn't want this issue to not be raised as a council priority. I assumed it would continue to be one, and wanted to just have you have the opportunity if there was a figure that anyone had in mind.
And it fits right in with the, kind of the standard procedure when you bring some things forward. Sometimes it's a little too soon, sometimes it's a little too late, and it's not ever just quite right.
I like to think that occasionally it's clear.
Mama bear, papa bear, and the parage.
Cheers. I guess, given the lateness of the hour, I did want to just touch base with the council. With the other two funds, the Stormwater Fund and the Speed Camera Fund, we can certainly just kind of go through a little bit of the history of those, or we can jump right into the discussion points. I'd like to handle this in whatever way the council is most comfortable.
My sense is we should cover the discussion points.
Okay. The Speed Camera Fund, I guess, is probably with the one at the next top. I guess the thing that I just wanted to mention, because there's probably a number of discussion points for you all. As I had mentioned in the information, we have a couple positions, the officer assigned to the gang task force that this year is being partially paid for out of a grant, and another project that is being paid for out of the special revenue fund that, at this point, we do not have identified funding for. Barring, I think we can safely say, the gang officer will need to be fully funded, probably out of the Speed Camera Fund this year at 75%. The other position, which is being paid for out of the special revenue fund, is sort of a research and policy analyst position. We have been paying for that out of burn justice assistance grants. It's likely we will get funding. A lot of it depends on what happens at the federal level. But assuming the most pessimistic case, my assumption has been that those positions may need to be moved to the Speed Camera Fund. In FY 12, just very quickly, we moved a lot of police equipment to the Speed Camera Fund, took it out of the Equipment Replacement Reserve to lighten the load on that, which is funded out of the General Fund, and moved it to Speed Camera. So we have the possibility of having some increased staffing costs going to the Speed Camera Fund in FY 13, and we will continue to have some police capital that will need to be expended. When you take all that out of the equation, we probably will net, is our best estimate at this point, about $615,000. Once you pay staff, pay the contractor, and take care of the police capital. So I guess the question for the council, as we talk about the next couple of issues, is how do you want to see that net of $615,000 spent? I would also say that the Speed Camera Fund right now is carrying a pretty large fund balance, mainly because there's been a lot of back and forth at the council level about sidewalks, ADA retrofit. We ended last year with about $1.12 million in the Speed Camera Fund. As more tenured members of the council may recall, there is a likelihood that we may have to do a large radio acquisition in FY 14. There's some possible good news on that, and talking to Lieutenant Bowers, but at this juncture of that just over $1 million, we need to reserve about $400,000 of that in the event we have to make this large radio acquisition in FY 14. So that leaves you with roughly about $800,000 in fund balance that can be allocated, how the council wishes to see it done. And then we have a net revenue of about $615,000. And so those are sort of the parameters in the Speed Camera Fund. There's some fund balance money that could certainly be used for infrastructure projects. We have, in this current year budget, $300,000 for ADA sidewalk retrofit work. The staff recommends that we, on an ongoing basis, we spend at least $300,000 if the council wished to be more aggressive in doing some retrofits to existing sidewalks. The staff-identified range would be somewhere in the $300,000 to $600,000 range. Obviously, the more you commit to other public safety projects, there's less funding available for new sidewalks and less funding available for traffic calming. So I don't know that you have to get really specific in terms of numbers, but I'm just, I mean, if you have figures in mind, that would be great. But I'm trying to get a sense of, with all the different things that could be done with the Speed Camera Fund, kind of where the council comes down. I did want to just note that we are proposing a new staff position to be paid for out of the Speed Camera Fund. Chief Corcy is here tonight. Our tentative title is a Police Communications Supervisor slash Emergency Coordinator. This position would actually kind of replicate some of the functions of the two positions that were eliminated in FY 11, take up some of that work that was done by those positions eliminated in FY 11, but would also kind of have a new twist. One of the things I've been talking to the chief about is just really needing to have a more consistent staff presence focused on emergency management. And I guess with that, chief, could you just maybe make a few brief remarks?
When we lost the two other positions, we had to spread it around, which meant my executive staff took over most of it, and Lieutenant Bowers' staff had to take over the day-to-day supervision of communications. One of the things that's concerned me, and I've discussed with city managers since I got here, is having somebody working full-time on emergency preparedness. We have the captain who goes to meetings, I go to certain meetings, and the lieutenant goes to certain meetings. It's a volunteer committee, and we have a lot, we get so much money from the county. Most other jurisdictions have full-time preparedness coordinators. I am concerned in an emergency that we have everything in place. We've done a good job because we have different people with different roles. Having a person that it's his full-time job, will be able to do more with the committee and get our plans, continually get them up to date. Now, our emergency preparedness plan is up to date, but it's a continual thing you have to do. I would compare it to accreditation. Every year, you've got to stay up on emergency preparedness. We in the city, we've had major problems with storms, as you all know, snow and ice. It's a major issue here in the city. We have multitude of different people in the city that are working on those problems. It really comes out of the communications center, which is the center of all activity during major crises. That's why I wanted to carry two positions. I think if we had a full, a person whose job would be to be emergency preparedness, we'd be better prepared, and we'd be able to handle some of the crises that come up. We've got people that do it, but it's a multitude of tasks, and spread them on my staff, which does push them to the limits. And we send different people to different meetings. I'd have one voice speaking for the city from the police department, which I think is important. On the communications side, we have different people filling in to make sure it's supervised. The first person city residents talk to when they call the city is our communications dispatchers. Five years ago, when I came here, that was one of the biggest problems, lack of customer service, the way people were talked to. There is not one person left in there than when I started, and that's the result of putting in good people and keeping them to the standard. We have a stable staff now, and we'll keep it that way, but having everyday supervision is important in continuing what we've developed and what we're doing. We also have these tasks, that person would also be involved in this purchase of the radio system. Now I've got it spread out among staff. We keep things centralized and obviously have one person working on it. Lieutenant Bowers wears many hats, Captain Corsi wears many hats, I wear many hats. And I'm not complaining about my workload, but I think to serve the city best, especially when you're talking about emergency preparedness, we need a person in that position.
Chief, you know, I know I've got gray hair, I'm getting a little older, but the acoustics in this room are great. I sat out here in the chair early last week, and you were up on the platform, and I swear I remember you saying that you would know better than to ask for additional staffing in the police department.
Sworn, you're sworn.
You need to carefully listen and parse words.
I said sworn. I didn't say a civilian.
I can support this, I can consider this, but I'd also like to know, and it raises another question, and that is, with the Speed Camera Fund, I don't want to see us just say, gee, we got money, let's spend it, and I'm not accusing you of that, but I wonder, is it a viable approach to create a public safety reserve in which we could hold Speed Camera money that's in excess of what our budget is for the year, so that we could use it for larger projects, public safety-related projects in future years?
That's certainly a viable approach. You know, that's part of the reason why with the, a year ago, I recommended that you set aside the $400,000 for the radio system. At that time, there was a lot of discussion about new sidewalks and traffic calming. That's certainly an approach. I think this, you know, this fund actually is a little bit more complex, even given its small size, just because there are a number of things that could be done. To date, we've shifted some positions to the Speed Camera Fund, as the council is aware. I have probably recommended to the council in the past that a lot of the focus be on capital, just in the event that anything ever happened to the Speed Camera Funds, that we didn't have tons of people being paid out of it. I would say, however, that the state itself is starting to rely a lot on Speed Camera revenues, so I'm not sure if you're going to see state law change, and could they be shooting themselves in the foot?
But they may want more of our money as our risk.
They will need it.
And, you know, and as you mentioned earlier in the meeting, Councilmember Simmons, as, you know, other revenues shrink and we add speed cameras, there probably will be a point in time that we would hit the 10% cap, and under current state law, we would have to turn those revenues over 10% to the state. I think this is just a case of how the council feels about moving more police department expenses, operating expenses, to the Speed Camera Fund to lighten the load on the General Fund. That's, you know, that is an acceptable approach, how much work you want to do in sidewalks and traffic calming.
I'll just say that I would rely heavily on your recommendation as far as depending on the Speed Camera Fund for ongoing expenses, operational expenses. I certainly appreciate the chief's recommendation for this, and it certainly hurts less if it's coming out of money that is restricted to just public safety, so.
Well, going back to our discussion last week, Speed Camera Fund would be the only way, and I realize, you know, the limitations, and that's the only reason we discussed it.
Right. I mean, I think just given, as I mentioned earlier, that, you know, my priority would be to get Daryl some assistance, and, you know, I think this is an important position, but the only way I could recommend funding it is out of the Speed Camera Fund.
But another use of this money could be for transferring, you know, another staff member.
It could be. One of the other things that chief and I have had some discussions about, we do have some, like, special detail overtime, DUIs, things of that nature, that are being charged to the Speed Camera Fund. Chief and I have had some discussions about perhaps increasing the overtime allotment in the Speed Camera Fund to cover some of the robbery details, you know, gas station thefts, kind of the non-routine overtime that happens in the police department.
And you know that you'll always get my support should you come in here and offer to add a position out of the Speed Camera Fund for officer to work with the youth in a non-enforcement manner.
And we are doing that now with our community outreach officer.
Councilmember Daniels, go.
I support this. This would be, it wouldn't be the individual who's doing it right now.
It'd be a civilian.
A civilian, with Captain Corsi's assistance, or, because he just does, I don't think everybody realizes what a fabulous job he does as the emergency preparedness manager, liaison officer. It's pretty incredible.
There's still, we do a lot of liaison work with the county in emergencies.
Right.
It would be a gradual, but the day-to-day operations would be done by this individual. It would free up the captain, who has obviously a lot of things on his plate, because he took over a lot of duties when we cut out the other division commander, civilian division commander's position. It would free him up. He would still have some part in it, because there is a sworn presence required, not as much as we do now. He does everything now in that area.
Right.
That committee needs somebody that would be working almost full-time to keep up with what I think the city needs to do for emergency preparedness, and it's an area that has been my concern to the city manager, and we didn't have a position, and this would alleviate a lot of that concern.
And my only concern about the Speed Camera Fund is if this is a permanent position and that fund runs dry, that may have been what Councilmember Simmons just said. I will continue to speed in the city so that we can continue to bring revenue in, so.
If you just give up your pay as a council member, that's a more direct way.
A more direct way, no. But, you know, I fully support this. Having been a member of the emergency, a volunteer member of the Emergency Preparedness Committee, I know how really important this kind of position is for the city, and to keep the city, especially nine miles, or right, you know, almost at the epicenter of anything that could possibly happen in the Washington metropolitan area, so.
Everybody pushed their buttons to speak on this one, and we got three more after this, and it's 10 of 11, so if we can plow through comments, that would be very helpful. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Just quick, what you're talking about, however you wish to do it, it sounds like you're on top of it. I just have a question, which is, for the ADA sidewalk retrofit, I, what's the legal requirement there? In other words, what do we have to do, and how much do we have to do, and so on and so forth?
I try not to practice law without a license, but I'll go ahead and do that.
We'll do it on camera.
Yeah. What, I mean, you know, the gentleman who came from the access board, the idea is that you're providing kind of equal access facilities, so, you know, I think it might have been you, Councilmember Grimes, who said, well, is it acceptable to have a compliant sidewalk on one side of the street? And the gentleman's response was, well, if you shut down it on one side. I mean, so kind of think of it as just sort of equalizing, you know, access for those who are disabled, particularly when you're talking about access to community facilities, for example, this building, pathways to probably schools. The law doesn't define a particular funding level. What it sort of indicates is that there should be kind of a systematic approach to getting your infrastructure into compliance. The $300,000 figure was, came out of a conversation with Daryl over a year ago in preparing the FY 12 budget, and what was sort of at least a critical mass of work that made sense from a financial perspective, is where that number came from. Anything smaller would be just sort of not efficient. So I think that's the minimum figure. We certainly have a lot of, you know, compliance issues, so I think if the council felt more comfortable because you, you know, wanted to allocate funding more towards traffic calming new sidewalks, you could simply make a decision that you wanted to spend $300,000 a year and make steady progress. I think what gets local governments into trouble, and there's certainly many examples, Montgomery County, Fairfax County among them, who are under consent orders now for ADA compliance with the Department of Justice, is if you don't appear to have a plan, and that you're not making good faith efforts to address your issues. And I know Councilmember Snipper is certainly very familiar with ADA-related issues and his other life, not as a council member. Would you agree, Councilmember Snipper?
I'll remark that when I hear about sidewalk issues, I'm not talking about installations, it's because there's a utility pole that's in the middle of a sidewalk, figuratively in the middle, not dead center, and that affects everyone, and it's not because someone's on a wheelchair coming by there, or it's a crumbled sidewalk. Like, you know, I was walking by on Carol Avenue by the Washington Baptist Hospital and the bridge there. Well, we don't need to go into that, but, you know, that's not just an ADA issue, it's an issue for everyone. So, yeah, it's helpful to understand that $300,000 is from a, if you're going to do anything, you should do this much, point of view. That's helpful.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. For me, at this time, I don't support the position, although that could change during the course of the budget discussions we have this year. And I say that because, one, I've heard a lot about how crime in Tacoma Park is falling, and I've heard a lot about officer retention being in a place that we want it to be. And third, I know that there are, you can hire as many people as you want, and you will always be able to fill their time with emergency preparedness meetings. And so I'd really like to know the specific things that we would get done as a community, what the specific outcomes would be. So that would be the, that would be the important information for a decision. When it comes to the ADA retrofit work, I don't want to just do the minimum. I would really like to be a community in the Washington DC area that people say, that's a community that's done all that they're supposed to do, and that is ahead of the game. So I know that we had the 2008 study that was done on, and looked at our non-compliance issues, and what I'd really like to know from city or city staff is how far along we are with that plan, and if we have $1 million of work to go, or $5 million of work to go, that plan, and if we have $1 million of work to go, or $5 million of work to go. That's the key piece to me, and let me just go through the whole thing, and I'll be done with all comments on this whole page. New sidewalks, traffic calming, you know, they're clearly our projects, at least in Ward 2, that are a priority, so, you know, I'd like to make sure that we have money in the budget for those things, but I don't have any sense for what, how big that would be. And then I support the stormwater project that's laid out here. That clearly seems to be a good forward-thinking way to set priorities. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I think the amount of ADA sidewalk work is probably a pretty large number that needs to be done. And when I reflect on the fact that large parts of the city of Tacoma Park don't have sidewalks at all, hardly at all, notwithstanding the fact that there's some substantial areas that have identified themselves as not wanting any sidewalks, still, there's a large number of areas that do. I'd like to sort of minimize the amount of work, money, do the $300,000 on ADA work, for the reasons that you cited. I like the idea of hiring an emergency coordinator. I'm curious to ask the chief, where does our, the emergency preparedness committee stand on this, the hiring, have they evaluated your idea?
I haven't taken it to them yet, because the proper thing would be to bring it to you first.
Oh, okay. I'd be curious to understand their point of view, and at some point, actually hear from that committee on that position. I would just say that emergencies of some magnitude are the thing that can keep you awake at night, because you know you're going to have them. You don't know when, or what the nature's going to be, how frequent or the severity of it. And, because, you know, they're sort of like the black swans. Just because you've never had a big tornado coming through the middle of Tacoma Park doesn't mean you're not going to have one this April. And so, you know, on the other hand, in support of Councilmember Mayo's view, you can also go crazy worrying about the next emergency, which will never happen. So the need is sort of somewhere in between. I'm really comfortable with the idea of having a full-time emergency preparedness coordinator, just simply so that there is that one person that everybody in the city government can turn to, as well as coordinate with other governments, and that it's not spread around a whole bunch of personnel who may or may not be on duty at the time. And I do think we ought to save some money set aside for new sidewalks. And I realize that when we first started talking about the Speed Camera Fund, we kind of assumed that we'd be rolling out sidewalks like red carpets all over the city, and we found out that in my ward, which actually wants sidewalks, for the most part, that even in that positive atmosphere, takes time. Just plane takes time to get this, the community consultations done, to get the engineering done, and to, you know, get to actual building the darned things. So we haven't been able to spend the money as fast as we should, but I do think we need to have a piece of this fund available for traffic calming and new sidewalks. It should be just there year in and year out. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Okay. I support this combined position. I think it's a great idea to have a communications supervisor part-time and emergency coordinator part-time, because I think that's what you had in mind, where sort of one guy filling two positions. I have a concern, though, about having Speed Camera monies paid for a management person. I have a preference for the Speed Camera money to be used for really more directly, safely related things, like the robbery details, or working with youth, or emergency preparedness, rather than sort of management responsibilities. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that use of the Speed Camera money. On the ADA sidewalks, I think, as we heard, going forward with a plan is the more important part, and $300,000, to me, seems like a reasonable amount. And I would like to see the same amount for new sidewalks and traffic calming, another $300,000 for that. I did have a question about the unreserved fund balances, not surprisingly, and you helped with that by pointing out that although it's a large pot of money, we have essentially an identified use for it, so I'm comfortable with that. Normally, I wouldn't have, wouldn't have been, wanted to see a large amount of money just sitting around in the Speed Camera Fund.
And I'll just add that, as for this new position, I'm generally not in favor. I think there are higher priorities for the money in the Speed Camera Fund, and I'm less comfortable adding more positions. I'm more comfortable with one-time costs, capital costs. Maybe that's just a leftover from the approach that we've had to take from the beginning with this fund, but I'm still more comfortable that way. And I say that with what I think is a fairly good understanding of emergency preparedness needs, in particular, having served as Chair of the National Capital Region Emergency Preparedness Council. So I know the importance, but I just feel like there are other priorities for that funding, and so I would generally not be in favor. I think the ADA sidewalk retrofit, just because $300,000 might be the minimum that would kind of make it feasible to do that work in a continuing fashion. I don't think that's good enough. I think it needs to be more than that, and I think we need allocation for new sidewalks and traffic calming projects. I don't remember the amount of potential ADA sidewalk work. I'm not sure if we ever had a total. I remember that the total identified in the, in the, whatever the name of it was,
Tool Design Study.
Tool Design Study for sidewalks overall was on the order of 45 million.
Yes.
And so $300,000 toward 45 million, or some smaller figure than 45 million, is a drop in the bucket. And I'd much rather be out there trying to fix some of these problems, because it, I think it's really important for all the members of our community and all the people who come through to have better access. And I just recall some of the points I made in earlier discussions about ADA compliance, that I see that issue multiple times a week when I go to Rhyderwood and assist my mother and her friends in getting around, and knowing that even just the smallest little incline, the smallest little lip, can make a huge difference for people to be able to maneuver. And when I see the work going on out at the corner here, at the corner of Maple and 410, and what I assume is a state highway contractor redoing those corners, and I guess maybe it has something to do with some light controls or whatever, but it's like, that doesn't appear to be ADA compliant work. Those inclines are way too steep, and somebody trying to come through in there in a wheelchair is kind of not managed very well. So I think it's really important to get it right.
The last item, and some of you have already, at least one of you has already weighed in, is the Stormwater Project study. Daryl sort of touched on this. It would be paid for. We do have sufficient fund balance in the Stormwater Fund. This would not be material to the change in the base rate. Daryl's concern is it would be $50,000 to $75,000. And I think there's a description in the agenda packet, so I won't go over that, given the lateness of the hour, but, Daryl, anything you wanted, anything you wanted to add?
If it's to meet federal mandates, I think we have to do it. Any other comments? It's 11:02.
Yeah, what time does the Super Bowl start?
Oh, that was last year. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.